Mrs. Peak, could you please call us back from closed session?
Good evening. If everyone could take their seats, we're going to get started here in a few minutes.
Mrs. Peak, if you could please call us back from closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council has reconvened from closed session during which it discussed potential litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9 sub D sub 2, potential litigation relating to assessor's parcel numbers 219, 231, 1400, 1500, and 1600, as well as one potential action relating to demands regarding that certain real property identified as assessor's parcel 2191142800. The council discussed the matter and provided direction to staff and special counsel, and no reportable action, additional reportable action was taken. Under Item 2, conference with legal counsel under existing litigation, Government Code Sections 5496, 56.9 sub A and sub D sub 1, the council conferred with the city attorney regarding pending litigation and special counsel regarding pending litigation, Assisted Living Foundation of America versus City of San Marcos, Superior Court of San Diego County, North County Division, Case Number 37202400023232. And on that matter, the council discussed the matter, provided direction to counsel, and no reportable action was taken. That concludes closed session report.
Thank you, Mrs. Peak. With that, the special counsel meeting is adjourned, and now we are going straight into our actual regular meeting for September 24th. Welcome, everyone. I call this meeting to order, and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I have an invocation this evening. God of peace, we invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us the spirit of unity. Help us each to listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen.
Okay, Mr. Scallit, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Musgrove, here. Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sannella?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, with that, we now have a smile award, and Councilmember Sannella is presenting that.
Just enough room for everything up here. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the council meeting tonight. Just bear with me for a second while I scoot these out of the way. It's an exciting evening. As you can tell by the big crowd, we have a lot of special presentations. Kathy, can I ask you to come join me? Thanks. So, we have a smile award, and for those that aren't familiar with it, it's an opportunity for the council to really recognize the folks in the community who, you know, rise to the top and who clearly reflect San Marcos' spirit of service. It was founded by the city council a few years ago. And for those that don't know, the smile stands for San Marcos Inspiration, Leadership, and Excellence Award. Really special opportunity. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing someone who we all have gotten to know over the years and, quite honestly, love. So, thank you. And someone who truly has become a pillar of our San Marcos community, Kathy Bauer, President and CEO of the San Marcos Boys and Girls Club. For those of us on the council and probably most people in the room, we all have gotten to know and really understand and appreciate what the Boys and Girls Club provides for our community. I simply don't have time tonight to share all of the positive impacts and, quite frankly, the miracles that the club provides for thousands of San Marcos youth every year. And I know if it was up to Kathy, she would much prefer that I talk about the club tonight and not her, but tonight's about Kathy. And so I'm going to talk about Kathy. Kathy started her journey with the Boys and Girls Club of San Marcos in 2000 during the peak of the pandemic. I can't even imagine what that was like. She swiftly transformed the club into a remote learning hub, providing support for children when they needed it the most, especially those of frontline workers and first responders, which is relevant tonight for our next special recognition. Under her guidance, the organization has seen remarkable growth, nearly tripling its operating budget and broadening its reach throughout the entire community. With the support of the City of San Marcos and club donors, Kathy championed the organization's biggest growth milestone with the opening of a second standalone clubhouse in the Richmar neighborhood. Today, the Boys and Girls Club of San Marcos serves nearly 3,000 children and teens in after-school programs and summer camps. I don't know how many kids we have in San Marcos, but that's got to be probably 20 or 30% of the total kids that we have in our population, and that's just remarkable. Before her tenure at the Boys and Girls Club, Kathy held several roles at Cal State San Marcos, including Vice President for University Advancement and Associate Vice President for Communications. She led the university through its inaugural fundraising campaign, raising 55 million and setting a record as the youngest institution in the United States to accomplish such a feat. Absolutely remarkable. For most folks, either one of those roles, either at the Boys and Girls Club or at Cal State, would be enough giving back to the community for just one person, but with Kathy, there's more. The route to Kathy's success comes from her passion for volunteerism and giving back to her community. She is an active member of both the San Marcos Rotary Club and Lake San Marcos Coanis Club, and serves as a mentor to local college students. The Smile Award not only recognizes Kathy for her years of contributions to our community and her San Marcos spirit of service, but it's timely as well. At the end of this year, Kathy will transition to the next chapter of her life in retirement. And while Kathy will be missed deeply by many of us in our community, we are so very happy for her and her family, and we wish her the best on a well-deserved retirement. Will you please join me in thanking Kathy for her commitment to our community and congratulating her on her Smile Award tonight?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you for the rest of city council. It's a true partnership that we have in San Marcos with the city council, Boys and Girls Club, our firefighters who come out every year and help us with our flapjacks for backpacks, cooking the breakfast, making sure our community has that opportunity. I am so appreciative of this and of my wonderful staff and the youth that we're able to serve every single day. As Mike mentioned, I'm retiring at the end of the year, but I know I'm leaving the club in wonderful hands with Christine Vaughn, who is our current Vice President and is going to be assuming the President and CEO role. I thank you all so much, and have a good evening.
Staff, you want to join her?
Do we get the staff to come up?
Well, we're really going to miss you, Kathy. Such a long time that we've worked together. I don't know what to do with all these. Next up, we have a presentation, the Claman African Vibe Festival, and we actually have here this evening, Johanne, are you here this evening? Oh, there she is. Okay, while you come on down, I'm going to grab something. Thank you so much for coming. So, Joanne is one of our residents here, and I'd like to present this to you. I'm going to let you hold that, but I'm going to read this one. So, that is for you personally, and this is for the festival. So, she started this year, the Claman Africa Vibe Festival. The Claman Africa Vibe Festival took place at UC San Diego Park and Market Event Center in downtown San Diego on September 21st, and was a vibrant celebration of African culture and textile art. And one of the things that I would like to mention, though, is we're hoping to get it up here in North County. So, this is one of the things that she's dreaming. Anyway, the festival offers valuable opportunities for San Marcos residents to engage in authentic experiences reflecting the true essence of African cultural richness. And the theme of this year's event was textile art from Africa to the world, offering an unparalleled opportunity to learn about and discover the universe of African textile art and its global impact over the last 50 years. The Claman and Company hosts the Claman Africa Vibe Festival and many other events and experiences in an effort to use the power of culture to unite, inspire, and empower. We, the city council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby recognize the Claman Africa Vibe Festival and Claman and Company for providing a valuable opportunity for residents to experience and engage in authentic and inclusive events encompassing African culture and heritage. Did you want us to read or play the video first? Okay. We're going to play a quick video, and then we'll hear from Joanne. Okay. All right, so now we're going to hear from Joanne.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much, Mayor Jones, for the opportunity today. I'm Joanne Yang. I'm the founder of Claman and Co., Home of Africa. I am a proud resident of San Marcos for the past 12 years. I'm very happy and privileged to be here. I'm very involved in my community. I'm on the PTO. My two girls go to Paloma Elementary School and San Marcos Middle School. My mission is really to foster a deeper understanding and appreciation of the African culture. When we think about the African culture, we think about, you know, food, rhythm, music, dance. It's really like a vibration, a celebration of colors, brightness, boldness. So, we really hope to bring those kind of events here in North County in partnership with the mayor and the City of San Marcos, and I look forward to seeing you around. Thank you so much for having me today.
We're going to take a quick picture, but I think she has some family members and some colleagues that wanted to come up. No, don't go running away. What are you doing? I thought you were going to get them, and I'm thinking, why aren't they walking up here? So, do you want to bring your, did you bring your family, did you say? All right, so if we have a fire, I feel pretty safe, don't you all? All right, well, so in our city, we definitely love all of our law enforcement and our firemen because we like our safety. So, today is bittersweet, but it's also a good thing. So, we have some pennings going on, but we also have some retirements. And I have to say, I read this and I went, wait a second, Doug's leaving? I didn't even know this, so I was a little surprised by that. Anyway, Chief, where are you? Are you going to come on down with me? So, this is our chief, Chief Barron. We love him and all of our team. But we have two certificates of recognition for some retirements, and that would be for Battalion Chief Doug Chalmers and then firefighter/paramedic Mark Truman. So, I'm going to have them come down. And Battalion Chief Doug Chalmers. Oh, you're in civilian clothes. I didn't recognize you. I was like, wait, where is he? Wow, so you're already gone, apparently. Okay. Wow. I didn't even know this. I mean, okay, well, anyway. We want to present you this Battalion Chief Chalmers with an honorable certificate of recognition for your service to the community. Battalion Chief Chalmers began his distinguished career in fire services in 1995, probably before a lot of us actually moved here, with the Huntington Beach Fire Department as an EMT. In 96, he was hired by Anaheim Fire Department as a reserve firefighter. In 1996, he also worked with Corona Fire Department as an apprentice firefighter. In 1997, he was hired by the San Marcos Fire Department as a firefighter and continuously progressed through the ranks of the position to the position of Battalion Chief. Battalion Chief Chalmers worked tirelessly in a variety of positions, completing his career as an operations battalion chief supervising B-shift. The city council of the City of San Marcos hereby recognizes him today for 27 years of dedicated service, for his unselfish commitment and continuous example of leadership and professionalism, and for his unwavering dedication to the core values and mission of the San Marcos Fire Department. The city council of the City of San Marcos wishes you the best in your retirement, and we are sad to see you leave. I don't know if you want to say a couple of words, but you're welcome to. Oh, oh! I forgot. So, when they give me the green light, you've been voluntold, so come on down.
They don't tell me anymore yet. Thank you for having me. Like she said, it was a long career, and it's actually still going on, but I want to thank everybody. I had the best time here. Made the best out of everything, and it was because of everybody out here that I see. And I've been gone three months, and I already missed the heck out of this place. I missed the heck out of a lot of people, so thank you for a long, prosperous, and loving, lot of friendship, all those things, and a great career. Thank you.
All right, firefighter/paramedic Mark Truman. Did he already leave also? Oh, civilian clothes. Okay. The San Marcos City Council does hereby present you, come on over, don't be shy, you get to speak too, with an honorable certificate of recognition for his service to the community as firefighter/paramedic. Firefighter/paramedic Truman began his distinguished career in fire services in 1994 with Cal Fire San Diego Unit as a firefighter and was hired as a firefighter/paramedic in 2006 with the San Marcos Fire Department. A long time, even longer than I've been with the city, barely, but definitely longer. Anyway, he was a firefighter/paramedic, and he worked tirelessly in a variety of operational positions, completing his career as firefighter/paramedic. The city council of the City of San Marcos is so grateful for his unselfish commitment and continuous example of leadership and professionalism, which, by the way, all of our firefighters and paramedics are definitely that way. But we appreciate your leadership and professionalism and for your unwavering dedication to the core values and mission of the San Marcos Fire Department. We're so grateful for you, and thank you so much. Now, speech.
What Doug said. Yeah, I just want to thank everybody, thank the city, and thank all the brotherhood and the sisterhood for the career here at San Marcos. I appreciate it, and a lot of memories, and I'll see you guys soon. Thank you.
Okay, now, we have a few of our guys that actually can't be here this evening. That is firefighter/paramedic Josh Wilcox, engineer/paramedic Mitch Smith, captain/paramedic Mike Corby, which I didn't even know they were all leaving either, and then also EMS coordinator Jenny Duffy. So, anyway, we have these four as well, and then we have some pennings. So, all of these firefighters that are up here this evening are all being promoted. And this is such an amazing testament to both the city and then also to our chief, because we have such a great team. But they've been here, all of them, I honestly, I think I've seen all of you the whole time I've been here since 2007. So, they've been here with us for a very long time. But the fact that we get to promote them, and they've been, a lot of them have spent all of their time here in San Marcos, is something we're so grateful for. So, anyway, Chief, do you want to come down? We have a lot of pins here, and I'm sorry if we mess them up. We were doing our best to not make them not fall on the ground. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Kathy, thanks for celebrating tonight with us, as we celebrate you being part of our community. First and foremost, I wanted to thank the community that we serve. Without the community of San Marcos, obviously, we wouldn't exist. For good, bad, indifferent, for those calls that we generate, for lifesaving, for, you know, the typical, you know, old modder of rescuing a cat out of a tree. I mean, that doesn't happen very often, but we're here to serve our San Marcos citizens.
I'm going to help you out, Chief.
Thanks. I want to thank our mayor and council members for providing the support that we need to do our jobs, our city staff, who tirelessly provides teamwork in order for our fire department to run, the internal customer service that we engage in on a daily basis to make this city what it is. And it takes the full team. It's not just the fire department, but it is completely the City of San Marcos employees that make this place such a wonderful place to live in and to work for. Fire Department family, most important people that I know that I need to thank is my family. And so, when I look out to this group of people, and majority of you are here to support the members that are in uniform, a big thank you to those family members. We know the sacrifices that we give. We don't always see the sacrifices that you give at home. And we know that there are many nights that go unintended without your loved one being at home, through those sick kids, through the first days of school, for holidays, some vacations that get canceled because of whatever activities that we're engaged in. We thank you. We wouldn't be able to do what we're able to do and provide that call of service, because it is a calling for all of us to do what we do. Some of the things that we see and some of the things that we engage on a daily basis are not for the lighthearted. And so, it is a calling that we all are dedicated and committed to, to make sure that we serve our community, we serve our neighbors with the best customer service and professionalism that we can. So, to our families, thank you for being there. To the San Marcos Fire family, my job is nothing without all of you. I serve on behalf of you and the community to make sure that you are supported in order to do your job. So, thank you for showing up to work and doing your job and protecting the citizens of San Marcos to the best of your ability. And without a doubt, you are the best. You provide that level of service that nobody else can. We believe in our city, we are invested in our city, and we serve the community that exists in the City of San Marcos. I mentioned that this is a calling in order to be part of the fire service. And we worked tooth and nail to get here, and when we finally land that job, and there are a lot of job opportunities, we've reached that checkpoint. The part that makes us different and every one of the members that are here standing amongst you is that they chose San Marcos, and we chose them. Again, that's what makes this place so special, is that they want to be here. They are invested in San Marcos. With that, the people that are going to come up and receive their badge based upon their position, they have reached that next checkpoint in their life. And if you look around, you'll see a couple of other people that are in street clothes and some of our retirees that have been retired for a few years. They've come back to see those generations be recognized and celebrate with them. So, it's a special place to be here, and this is an absolute celebration. One of the many great things that we get to encounter in our careers. So, with that being said, I'm going to ask a couple of Chief Frederick and Chief Wright to come on down and support me here with badges. And we are going to start out. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. My apologies. Before we go on to the badge ceremony, my partner, Ryan Mackey, who is one of our fire engineers and our president of Local 4184 and the Fire Association, I'm going to have Ryan come up and share a couple of words, and then we'll move right on to the badge presentation.
Thanks, Chief. Good evening and welcome. My name is Ryan Mackey. I'm the president of the San Marcos Professional Firefighter Association. On behalf of our members, I want to thank you all for being here tonight. This is a special night for us. It's an opportunity for us to showcase our department, to recognize our newly promoted individuals, and welcome our new hires to the San Marcos Fire Department family. I'd like to thank our city manager, Michelle Bender, and Fire Chief Dan Barron, and each of their respective support staff for giving us the tools and the training necessary to make us perform at the highest level, and most importantly, to keep us safe so we come home to our families at the end of our shift. I'd like to thank the mayor and our city council for your support, your unwavering support in the public safety. It doesn't go unnoticed, and we appreciate it. It doesn't go unnoticed, and we appreciate it. As a resident and an employee, I believe in our city's leadership. I'm a proud member of the San Marcos Fire Department. But like chief said, you know, the most important part of the fire service is our families, the foundation. It's the unsung heroes of the fire service. And I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for our families pushing us into this career, a career of public safety. This job is great. A couple hours ago, I was in a fire having the time of my life. And that's the truth. It's rare, but it's the truth. We really enjoy what we do. We enjoy serving the public and helping others, and, you know, working alongside our brothers and sisters at the fire department. But there's sometimes, like chief said, there's moments where it may not be as great. The phone calls home at 8:00 a.m. when you're telling your wife, "I can't come home today." The missed holidays, missed T-ball games. Sometimes we're up all night. We'll come home a little tired and maybe a little grumpy, and our family, you know, is on the receiving end of that. It takes the support and understanding from our families to help us perform well as firefighters. So with that said, thank you. And to everybody up here, congratulations on everybody who's recently been promoted, and to our new hires, welcome to our family. Thank you.
So in a few years, many of us that are standing up here with the gold on our collars, that just means that we're closer to the end. And that truly, I mean, I look at these individuals up here, some have some more years behind them, but there's many of us that stand up before you that don't have many years left. And so our job is to make sure that we leave this place better than when we found it, and we leave it in the hands of people that can take our organization to the next level. And so that's why this moment, these moments are so vital to our success. We have to bring value every day to this organization, because it can get better, and the people that are in this room are gonna make it better. So with that being said, we're gonna start out with our first promotion, which is going to be Jordan Avial. Hopefully, you can still hear me if I'm walking away from the microphone. But I'm gonna have his daughter Clara come on up. We'll figure it out. Fire Captain Tom Cetruba, wife Stacy. Fire Captain Jeff McCloskey, wife Megan. Fire Captain Eric Staton, wife Janesa. Our medical services officer, Amy Clark, and husband Billy. Fire engineer Ryan Mackey, wife Tara. Fire engineer Robbie Richard, and daughter Reagan. Fire engineer Jason Young, his mom Kim. Firefighter/paramedic Sean Boswell, and mother Lisa. Firefighter/paramedic Courtney Craker, and grandfather John Lovett. Now you can cry. Firefighter/paramedic Slater Lee, and father Brian. We would recognize firefighter/paramedic Richard Lemus tonight, but he is sick at home, so we won't catch him on the next round, but I just want to make sure that we recognize Richard and his successors. Firefighter/paramedic James Morgan, and his fiance Christine, and her daughter Brynlee. EMT Mitchell Adams, and girlfriend Malia. EMT David Kukavo, and his mom Lucia. EMT Chandler Cockle, with mother Pam and sister Nicole. Chandler can do a really good speech, but I won't. EMT Adam Corona, and girlfriend Lauren. EMT Ian Friday, and his dad John. EMT Butch Gonzalez, and mom Leah. EMT Nate Carney, and dad Doug. EMT Scott Mansfield, girlfriend Sydney. EMT Aureo Benoy, and mother Debbie. So it's a lot of new people. Their first day in their new positions is not today. We do this once a year, so over the past 12 months, these individuals have promoted within that time. Some 11 months, 30 days ago, some just a week ago. So this has been a good 12 months for us from a mentoring standpoint, and they wear that badge, that shield on their chest with pride. That's what they've worked for, and that shield represents a lot of things, but the bottom line is, we promise, we vow to serve the community in the, with the highest regard and with integrity and professionalism, and we take that very seriously here for the city of San Marcos. We have high expectations, and these are our future leaders as well as the people that are standing behind you. So congratulations to you, and I'm going to share one last thing because on every one of your promotional letters, I put this at the end of our memo. No matter what anyone says, just show up and do the work. If they praise you, show up and do the work. If they criticize you, show up and do the work. If no one notices you, show up and do the work. Just keep showing up, doing the work, and leading the way. I'm proud of each and one, each and every one of you. Go out there, lead from the front, and do your work. Congratulations.
Squeeze in though, come on. Got some on this side. So we get like the logo in the background. Feel free to stand up and get a picture too if you want. All right, start smiling.
Now, not everyone jump up and leave all at one time. It's okay, we understand. I just wanted, thank you. We will give them a few minutes to leave, but anyway, thank you everyone for coming and celebrating our fire department. They do such a great job, and their spirit of service is, their spirit of service is really what makes our city as great as it is, so thank you for coming.
Did someone leave a phone, forget a phone?
Okay, all right, we're going to get back to business. We do really enjoy spending time celebrating all of the good things that people are doing within our community. We will be moving on to our consent calendar. Do I have any items that any council members wish to pull?
Move to approve tonight's consent calendar.
Second, okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any notes? Seeing none? Okay, then we will be moving on to oral communications. The San Marcos City Council is a legislative body that conducts business in these chambers for all San Marcos residents, representing them in matters that are within our control and/or within our jurisdiction. We have a legislative platform that ha, that all four council members and myself have approved unanimously every year that we've been elected. It states in part, legislative priorities may only address issues directly relevant to and/or impacting the provision of municipal services. Generally, the city will not address matters that are not pertinent to the city's local government services such as social or international issues. This has been a longstanding and very successful policy dating back to the 80s in San Marcos, staying in our lane, as I put it. We will not be entertaining any agenda items that do not fall within the legislative platform as adopted by this city council. Bullying and harassing behavior will not intimidate this city council to change our minds. All of our residents will be treated with respect and dignity. They will have the opportunity to have their voices heard. Our residents know that this city council will not waver. We will not be pressured to allow any residents that raise their voices or use personal attacks to change our minds and allow items on our agenda that do not fall with under our, under our local authority. We will continue to represent everyone fairly and will not put any group above another. We will continue to represent all San Marcos residents as we put, as we stay in our lane by putting their safety, quality of life, and welfare as our highest priorities. With that, we do have five speakers. We have 15 minutes in our first comment period, so the first speaker will be Skip Hammond, followed by Ann Machinsky, followed by Jackie Zolick. Welcome, Skip.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to Mayor, fellow council members. My name is Skip Hammond. My colleagues and I live in San Diego County and are volunteers for the United Sovereign Americans, and we're not spokespeople. The United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. The website is unithenumberfourfreedom.com. That's unithenumberfourfreedom.com. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens sharing alarming information about our state's voter roll database. Research of the state's voter database was done through hundreds of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and credentialed data teams. The analysis of the 2022 election researched by the highly qualified data teams using only official data provided by the California election officials indicates serious issues with compliance of federal law. We are here to present to you and the public the results of the aforementioned analysis showing that votes cast, counted, and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and under the law. We're not here to cast any blame or aspersions on any elected official. We do not suggest any candidate, any race, have wrongly won or lost their races, nor do we advocate for the overturning or rerunning of any past elections. Today, we will present you with a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. Your written copy contains many U.S. Supreme Court precedents, federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. Though you bear no direct responsibility for anything the electoral process, we come to you, our closest elector representatives, for support and action. We are asking that you listen to the resolution and take the necess, take the necessity for a valid election seriously by adding the resolution to your next meeting agenda. Thank you, and our next three speakers will read the resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Skip. Next up will be Ann Machinsky, followed by Jackie Zolick, followed by Barbara Carnahan.
Thank you. My name is Ann Machinsky, and I'm here to read into the record the first portion of the USA Resolution. Resolution for a Legally Valid 2024 General Election. Whereas it is recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections. Whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate. National Voter Registration Act 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters. U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots in error by the voting system. Help America Vote Act 2002. Whereas the analysis of the California 2022 general election has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including 5,886,198 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database. 2,776,939 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain regu, regulate, registration, excuse me. 123,785 more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them. 2,776,849 apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. Our maximum allowable system errors for the 2020 general election in California was 90. Again, California had approximately 2.8 million apparent voting violations. Certification as defined by law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Thank you.
Ben, next up will be Jackie Zolick, followed by Barbara Carnahan, and then after that will be John Mosher.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Zolick, and I'm here to read into the record the next section of the USA Resolution. Again, California had approximately 2.8 million apparent voting violations. Certification as defined by the law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Whereas the findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric, fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us and demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Number two, voter rolls certified accurate and available for public review and challenged 30 days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Number three, hand-marked secure ballot similar to currency. Where image technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Number four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification testing, and implementation. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. I'm sorry, yes, nope. Ann, wait, shoot, did I, did I do that wrong? Jackie is up next, followed by, no, I think that was Jackie. Yes, thank you. Don't say it right. Barbara is up next, followed by John Mosher. My apologies, Barbara.
Oh, that's fine. Hello, my name is Barbara Carnahan, and I will read into the record the last section of the USA Resolution. Number five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witness after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Number six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, a national institute of standards and technology compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level of all elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment, Section 2 must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified insured and bonded security, forensics, or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Number eight, if the total of unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of records. Number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved that the San Marcos City Council stand in support with concerns and remedies presented here. We implore the California Legislature, federal legislatures, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California Secretary of State and county registrants of voters to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people. In closing, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Barbara. Up next is John Mosher. He will be our last speaker. Welcome, John.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, Michelle, Helen, and Phil. I want to thank you guys for your quick response to the two problems we encountered at a couple of our mobile home parks from the last city council meeting, and also all the city staff you have working on it and the attorneys you have working on it. We appreciate it. We have scared residents of what's coming at them. I know Jeff is here to talk for Lakeview, and I want to thank Helen for opening up the line of communication so we can communicate and keep up abreast of what's going on for our residents. The other thing I want to do is, Mayor, I wanted to thank you for, in April, I believe, was when we had the community block grant. was when we had the community block grant funds that were being distributed, and the Legal Aid Society, the CEO of Legal Aid Society was here, and you referred me directly to them while she was sitting in the audience. Megan Osborne with the Legal Aid Society has been working on something for us since May, and we concluded that last week, and she's given me some great information on how to try and achieve some of the problems we're trying to solve in our park, the San Marcos Mobile Estates. So I want to thank you for that. I appreciate the city's support for the Legal Aid Society of San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, moving on to new business, we have Resolution 2024-9360, Support of Prop 36, the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act. I place this on the agenda because the passing of Prop 47 achieved notable success in making California's justice system more equitable. However, unintended consequences of Prop 47 include repeat and often organized retail theft, inner-city store closings, and difficulty convincing people to seek drug and mental health treatment. These unintended consequences can only be corrected by the voters at the ballot box with modest amendments through the adoption of Prop 36, the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act. Bipartisan, this is a bipartisan measure, and the authors regard these changes as common sense, targeted reforms to Prop 47 that legislative proposals alone are unable to deliver. So I have a letter that I'd like to read into the record, and it is from Dane White, the mayor of Escondido, our neighboring sister city. He and I have spoken about this in pretty good detail. So he is currently the mayor, but he was a drug addict, actually. A lot of people don't know that, and he was also homeless. So I had him put together a letter. He was trying to make it this evening, but then he ran into some issues. So he said, "Good evening, my name is Dane White, and I'm the current mayor of the city of Escondido. I'm also a lifelong resident of the city, and at age 12, I was first introduced to marijuana and alcohol. By the age of 13, I had already moved on to harder drugs. By 15, it got so bad that my parents sent me away to boarding school, where I would stay for a year and a half until I ran away and ended up living with my grandfather briefly in the state of Utah. Before high school graduation, I was kicked out of the house again for drinking alcohol and drug abuse, and eventually landed into juvenile hall and then foster care until my 18th birthday. Immediately after exiting the foster care system, I would spend the next five years traveling back and forth from Utah to California, in and out of homelessness, trapped in the cycle of addiction. It wasn't until I was arrested for a fourth time for public intoxication that a judge gave me a choice: six months in jail or six months in rehab. At the time, I would have told you that I didn't want or need help. I would have told you that it was under control. However, the choice was clear, and soon after, I entered the North County Inland Regional Recovery Center. It was one of the best choices I have ever been given, and it worked. I didn't want help, but it was mandated, and it worked for me. Anyone who has spent time in recovery knows that the first step is to recognize you have a problem and admit your life has become unmanageable. I believe that what we are seeing is an epidemic of people who have lost the ability to manage their lives, and a choice needs to be given." And that's one of the provisions of Prop 36, by the way. "Had it not been for the mandate to get help, I would either be dead or serving a long prison sentence." And this is from Dane White, as I mentioned, the mayor of Escondido. He said that I could publicly read that aloud. This is one of the reasons that I am personally supporting Prop 36. It's a bipartisan proposition. It's also supported by small businesses, crime victim advocates, social justice organizations, and law enforcement. And here in San Marcos, one of the most important things that our citizens really enjoy is their safety, and we can only do this with the right tools. Our Sheriff's Department does a great job, but if they don't have the tools, they cannot keep us safe. So Prop 36 incentivizes drug and mental health treatment. It restores incentives for people to utilize drug courts and that mandate treatment. It creates a treatment-mandated felony where individuals with two or more prior hard drug possession convictions can undergo drug and mental health treatment instead of going to jail. It allows individuals who successfully complete treatment to avoid jail time and expunge their records. Prop 36 creates tougher penalties for serial retail theft, smash, and grabs. Many of us have heard stories about a loved one that has either been in a store or is a clerk at a store where there has been a smash and grab. It's terrifying. I've never had it myself, but if I would be in a store that had that currently happening, it would be terrifying. We must keep our citizens safe. So it increases penalties for the smash-and-grab crimes. It creates tougher penalties and better accountability for repeat retail theft offenders. It allows stolen property values from multiple thefts to be combined. Right now, there is an instance in our state where I think it's over 200 days in a row, or 200 days, maybe not consecutively, but since the penalties have been not the same as they were before Prop 47, the people have gone out and stolen up to $950 each time, doing it again, again, and again, and they do not have the penalties that they deserve. So this allows the stolen property values from multiple thefts to be combined, countering tactics by career thieves who steal repeatedly to avoid harsher penalties. Prop 36 confronts the fentanyl crisis in our communities. I was at a, actually, Councilmember Musgrove and I were both at this event, and it was with families of children that had died from fentanyl poisoning. It sometimes only takes one time, and you get a drug-laced pill that you don't even know you're consuming, and that's it. You actually can overdose. So it's terrifying what's happening in our communities. It enacts stricter penalties for drug dealers whose trafficking causes death or serious injury, allowing potential murder charges if it results in fatalities. It ensures that fentanyl is treated like heroin, cocaine, PCP, and methamphetamine when offenders possess a firearm. And it also toughens penalties for selling large quantities of fentanyl. So for these reasons, this is why I wanted to put it on our agenda, so that we can give our law enforcement partners, our Sheriff's Department, the tools that they need to keep our San Marcos residents safe. So with that, do we have any speakers? Does the council have anything that they'd like to say before the speakers, or would you like to wait until after our speakers this evening? Okay, all right. So we have some speakers on this item, starting out with Peter Whitley. Next up will be Alan Geraci, Flower Alvarez Lopez, and then it will be Sandy Nissou. Peter, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. I'd like to share that Proposition 36 sucks. It's going to create a lot more problems than it's meant to address. It's going to put more people in prison, and it's going to tap taxpayers' dollars, taxes, and put those taxes towards things that don't really remediate the problem or address the core issue. And if we can focus on taking our attention and putting it into programs that increase education and rehabilitation, that would be the sensible thing to do. But instead, what this is going to do, it's going to put more people in prison, it's going to disproportionately affect people who are struggling with drug addiction, and will also disproportionately affect Black and Brown people and people who are already currently marginalized in our community. So I'm against it. So there it is.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Next up is Alan Geraci, followed by Flower Alvarez Lopez, and then it will be Sandy Nissou.
Honorable Mayor, Council, staff, I want to talk about Prop 36. I'm going to urge a no vote on this resolution. A little history, California passed Prop 47 in 2010 with an overwhelming majority to respond to the overfill prisons throughout California, to comply with the United States' Constitution, to save taxpayers' money, and to improve the state prison system without compromising public safety. The law allows prosecutors and judges discretion to charge minor shoplifting and drug possession felonies as misdemeanors, thus expanding the list of what prosecutors called wobblers, wobbler offenses. The law gives prosecutors and judges this discretion, not less. The cost savings from spending less for prisons is now funneled into safety measures like drug and mental health treatment, homelessness prevention, and victim relief services. This law aligns with community policing practices and gives judges greater sentencing discretion. In 2020, there was an attempt to repeal Prop 47, which failed with less than 40% of the vote. A decade of research has shown Prop 47 has accomplished its stated goals. It has reduced recidivism, saved the state more than $800 million, and reduced both prison population and the racial disparities along with it. Research has shown no increase in violent crimes, robbery, or burglary statewide. Now, the same political advocates of 2020, including the prison lobby and private prison lobby, are now pushing Prop 36 on this year's ballot, rebranding it as the Homeless Drug Addiction and Theft Reduction Act. Although a reading of this poorly drafted law shows that none of the provisions addressing homelessness directly, and to remove the prosecutor judicial discretion to treat these minor offenses as felony wobblers, and instead ties the hands of the prosecutors and the judges to charge hardcore felonies requiring a minimum prison sentence. The result is $100 million stripped for drug treatment, housing, school-based programs, and prove and prevent crimes that would have prevented these crimes in the first place. It will cost taxpayers $5 billion more for jails and prisons and court services throughout California. I remember when I started my practice as a prosecutor for the city of San Diego, I had some matters in federal court. Soon after Congress passed the minimum sentence guidelines, Judge Larry Irving resigned because he believed his discretion was taken from him. I'll never forget that Prop 36 is an attempt to repeat history. Please do not pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Next up, Flower Alvarez, followed by Sandy Nissou, and then Emily Mohammed.
Good evening, Council. My name is Flower Alvarez Lopez. On behalf of Universidad Popular, so I'm registering our organizational position tonight, and we're in strong opposition of Agenda Item 14. With many of us thinking that the tough-on-crime era was behind us, unfortunately, we find ourselves here. I'm here doing public comment in this room on Agenda Item 14. The LA Times just two days ago published, from the Times Editorial Board, an article on September 22 against Prop 36. I would like for us to take a minute to remind ourselves that the rhetoric that is sometimes used has real-life consequences to real-life people. When we use rhetoric that criminalizes and dehumanizes Black and Brown communities, it has real-life impacts. I'm not sure how many of y'all on this council are directly impacted by family members that are struggling with substance abuse issues or find yourselves with a loved one that's incarcerated or has served time in incarceration. But I can speak firsthand. I heard you speak earlier, Mayor, today when you were doing your comments of people you've spoken to or other folks that you have engaged with. Well, I'm here telling you my real-life story and my firsthand experience. Prop 21. In 2000, Prop 21 was passed, which allowed minors to be tried as adults. It removed a whole entire generation from their families and their communities, a lot that came from San Marcos and other Black and Brown communities around the state. Black and Brown communities barred the impact of Prop 21. It took a wave of state legislation to address the issues with Prop 21 in a series of youth offender laws. Prop 184, 1994. I had the chance to attend a panel with the Reynolds family. Mike Reynolds was the one that really was a proponent for the three-strike law. And just two years ago, I attended a panel where his family was actually working to repeal it because the way that it was implemented was not the way that his family originally intended. Prop 47, same. A lot of the money that was saved and came down for Prop 47, even though now we're seeing this false comparison of Prop 36 versus Prop 47, 47 actually came with a lot of money that went directly to district attorneys. My request is that the council think about my community, people that look like me, when making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sandy Nissou, followed by Emily Mohammed, and then Natalie Martinez.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Nissou. I'd like to start by thanking the Honorable Mayor Rebecca Jones and the members of the City Council for giving me the opportunity to speak before you today. I strongly urge you to support the resolution and support of Prop 36. I'm here on behalf of the Neighborhood Market Association. The NMA is a nonprofit organization that represents hundreds of independent family-owned supermarkets, convenience, and neighborhood stores throughout the state. Neighborhood markets are the lifeblood of our communities, and small business owners are the backbone of our economy. Prop 36 will help stop the wave of theft and violence caused by Prop 47 that continues to harm our small business owners, their employees, and, most importantly, their customers. We believe Prop 36 will give law enforcement the tools it needs to keep all of us safe. Our community can no longer afford the damages and the unintended consequences caused by Prop 47. When criminals rob a neighborhood store, the financial damages and the fear inflicted goes beyond that business to the surrounding businesses and neighborhoods. This is not a Republican or a Democratic issue. It is not a partisan issue. It is a community and family safety issue. NMA, alongside every family-owned business in San Marcos, is urging you to vote in support of Prop 36 resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sandy. Next up is Emily Mohammed, followed by Natalie Martinez, and then Justin Ganz.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. I come here before you to say that I say that it's not a good idea to pass Proposition 36 for a lot of the same reasons that the people that came before me said. We don't want a repeat of the war on drugs. We saw how that affected communities in America and how mass incarceration is mass elimination. And it doesn't really, crime doesn't go away, it just increases the money that we spend on prisons. So I vote no on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Emily. Next up is Natalie Martinez, followed by Justin Ganz, and then Edward, I think it's Poulert, and my apologies if I am not reading that correctly. Welcome, Natalie.
Good evening, Council. I am a community educator with Universidad Popular here in San Marcos, and I am here tonight to voice my opposition to Prop 36. There are several key issues that this proposition brings, and one of those does stem from the fact that it would mandate the substance treatment for all of the individuals with a third possession charge. Those who fail their treatment, which is a likely occurrence for folks going through treatment for the first time, would automatically be sent to jail, and jails are already heavily overcrowded and do not need to be inundated more so with people charged simply for a drug possession. Regardless of how long or short the length of jail time, this would also disrupt folks' financial stability and undoubtedly contribute more to homelessness rather than reduce it. The method chosen here would also take up much of the funding that has already been set aside for mental health services, something that is very much needed if you are trying to address the root causes of these types of issues. Instead of fixing homelessness, drug use, and crime, Prop 36 will make these issues worse by eliminating programs that have already been proven to turn people's lives around and waste millions of dollars on mass incarceration instead. We deserve healthy approaches that prevent crime and improve everyone's quality of life, like affordable housing, good jobs, and access to mental health and drug treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Justin Ganz, followed by Edward Poulert.
Good evening, Council. I believe our city would be mistaken to endorse Proposition 36, a measure that would expand our already massive, expensive, and cruel criminal incarceration system while defunding services that are proven to prevent crime, prison recidivism, and drug abuse relapse. Prop 36 would cost the state billions in new prisons and jail spending over the course of 10 years. of 10 years, which would be the biggest prison spending increase in California history. Additionally, the prison spending initiative would impose draconian criminal penalties, including possible prison time for low-level drug-related offenses, returning California to an era of costly mass incarceration and dangerously overcrowded prisons. Prop 36 claims to address retail theft, drug abuse, and homelessness, but Prop 36 would cut hundreds of millions from successful programs, including cuts to mental health and substance abuse treatment, cuts to trauma recovery services for survivors of crime, and cuts to programs for K-12 public school students. In short, Prop 36 does not address the root causes of the issues it claims to address, instead resorting to a misguided and already proved disastrous approach to our justice system. Prop 36 does not support resources nor rehabilitative services that would help alleviate retail theft, drug abuse, and homelessness. If Prop 36 had a genuine interest in fixing these issues, it would instead properly address poverty, housing, and drug abuse recovery services, things that it doesn't put any funding or resources into. I ask that the council reconsider endorsing this measure, and instead call upon our state government to provide more services that can eliminate poverty, provide affordable housing, and keep all Californians physically safe and mentally healthy. Thank you. Please reconsider this.
Is Edward Poehler?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name's Edward Poehler. I'm a cultural psychologist and have worked in higher education for 41 years as a counselor. I give you that background because I've been working with formerly incarcerated students for the last five years, and rehab is not always available. And these are folks who are coming back to the community college system and making their way, and attaining degrees, and going out back into society as great citizens of the state. I also am opposed to Prop 36 resolution that you're considering tonight. It assumes that treatment centers have ample room and funding to treat folks who have drug addiction. Number two, it also assumes that folks can kick their habit, so to speak, and do that while they might be homeless, jobless, and have no other resources. It also does not provide Prop 36 any funding, so it's a cheap way of making people feel good who are anti-crime. I think we're all, it's safe to say that we're all anti-crime, but this is no way to fix it. Lastly, but not, but not, my last comment is that we have ample laws right now in the state that address issues of burglary, theft, et cetera, and we should let that take its place, as in Prop 47 has. As a counselor, we don't need more prisons, we need more care and humanity in order to move forward as a society. Thank you.
Thank you, Edward. Next up, Aidan Albaquin Brown, followed by Cameron Ashantiyani-Eisman.
Hello, my name is Adana Bocken Brown. I'm here to just echo the sentiments given by everyone else on opposition to Prop 36. I also don't believe that this will in any way actually fix homelessness. It doesn't make any sense to try to alleviate this issue of people literally living on the streets by trying to just sweep them away and put them somewhere else because you don't want to see them. It doesn't actually fix the root cause. They actually need to be treated as human beings, and, like you said, with humanity and with care, because they are real people who had their own mother, their own father, and are now all on their own. And so we need to treat them with respect and with dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Cameron Ashantiyani-Eisman. Oh, sorry.
Hi, my name's Cameron Ashantiyani-Eisman. I just want to speak a little bit about addiction. I was addicted to cigarettes and weed, and those are considered very minorly addictive. People used to think weed was not really addictive. I was addicted to it, and I was not going to change my habit because someone was going to tell me to. It took a very powerful spiritual experience, and something that felt like close death, to kick both of those habits over in one day. So I think basically forcing people to seek this, like, type of mandated treatment is just not something that's going to work. It's crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I had a couple of things. There were some things that were said I just wanted to talk about. First of all, Prop 36 creates tougher penalties for serial retail theft, smash and grabs, and it's about retail smash and grabs that are repeatedly done. It also is countering tactics by career thieves who steal repeatedly to avoid harsher penalties. It creates treatment-mandated felonies where individuals with two or more prior hard-drug possession convictions can undergo drug and mental health treatment instead of going to jail. It also allows individuals who successfully complete treatment to avoid jail time and expunge their records. Expunge means that you, it's actually like erased. And then I wanted to also read, we do have a letter here this evening from the San Diego Regional Chamber. I want to read this into the record. Dear Mayor Jones, on behalf of the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce, I am writing to express our support for the proposed resolution in support of Prop 36, the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act. As the largest chamber on the West Coast, representing approximately 2,000 businesses and 300,000 jobs, we understand the economic value of a thriving and safe region for our businesses, employees, patrons, and residents. The chamber is supportive of meaningful action that addresses retail theft and organized crime. This summer, the chamber's Public Policy Committee and the chamber's Board of Directors voted to support Prop 36 because it is fair and balanced. It's a bipartisan approach to reforming Prop 47, which has failed small and large businesses and our community members. The chamber is a proud supporter of Prop 36 and is a member of the statewide coalition, Californians for Safer Communities. Just last week, the chamber co-hosted an educational workshop for the business, local business community regarding Prop 36 with the district attorney, who is also supporting this, the Gaslamp Quarter Association, and the San Diego Downtown Partnership. The chamber stands ready to support and promote this balanced and common-sense reform measure to ensure its passage this November. Crime data indicates that retailers in urban counties have increasingly been targets of organized crime and have had limited options to repeat, to prevent repeat crime due to minimal penalties for these offenders. The chamber believes Prop 36 will improve public safety throughout the state of California by focusing on accountability. Prop 36 will address organized and serial retail theft by holding repeat offenders accountable for their actions, and will confront the fentanyl crisis head-on by defining fentanyl as a hard drug and grants greater discretion to judges when sentencing dangerous drug traffickers. Prop 36 will also address the root cause of crime and homelessness, mental health crisis, and substance addiction by creating a new court process, treat mandated felonies. Retail theft is severely impacting businesses bottom-line and should be taken very seriously. Prop 36 will accomplish this by making a third conviction for burglary or a felony. For these reasons, the chamber kindly requests that you support Prop 36 this evening, and looks forward to working with the city of San Marcos to improve public safety, reduce homelessness, and prevent drug addiction. And that is signed by Justine Murray, their Executive Director of Public Affairs. Okay, any discussion with the council? Our former sheriff captain, Councilmember Musgrove.
Thank you, Mayor. So, back in 2010, when Jerry Brown, then governor, was under a federal order to reduce prison populations, he could not find any region in the state that wanted to build a prison, nor could he find the funding to do it. So the way to resolve that was to clear the prisons, and they shut prisons down. And I was still with the Sheriff's Department back then, and we saw a significant increase in the number of convicted felons who would otherwise be in state prison being brought back to the county jails, and those who would otherwise have been sent up to remain in the county jails. And when I was still working, we actually had a person who was serving a 10-year sentence at the Vista Jail, which is ridiculous. It's not set up for long-term prison. Prop 47 came about in 2014. It was on the November ballot in 2014, and it was titled "The Safe Neighborhoods and Schools Act." And if you're just a casual observer of a ballot, you would see that, and looking at the preamble, say, oh, well, this sounds like a pretty good deal, it's going to make things safer. The way it did it was by not putting people in prison or putting them in jail for their acts. So the argument would be, well, if they didn't go to prison, they're not a former, you know, prisoner or a convict. It did, it did a lot of things that undid a lot of good measures we had. When I was a patrol deputy here in North County, I arrested a number of people for drug charges, and they would go in front of Judge Harry Elias, who had what we called the drug court. And he would be very reasonable with it, and explain to them that this is your opportunity to avoid jail. And it wasn't an automatic if you didn't comply with the standards of treatment. If you had a little problem and you backslid, the counselors would come in, speak on your behalf, and he would give individuals a number of chances until it was to the point where they just were not going to do anything to better themselves, and then they might go to jail. But when the prisons closed, the local jails are now almost completely full of felons that would otherwise have gone to state prison, which is why the district attorney is backing this, because her hands are tied. She knows that she could have a case issued and sentenced in court to either local time or prison time, but if it's not a serious violent felony, they're just going to be released. And it's not doing us any good. I don't know how that makes our streets and our schools any safer. All we're trying to do with this is bring back a little bit of common sense, bring back some component of the drug courts where the judges have some latitude, where they can get those people that definitely need and want help, get them on a path to a better way. We heard from vicariously through the mayor, Dane White, from Escondido. I've talked to him a number of times, heard his story. It is a success story, but it was not a linear story. Very few people follow that straight line into rehab, and now I'm a great citizen and I have a great job. It takes a lot of effort, takes a lot of work, but it requires that support system. And that's what we're looking at with Prop 36. It's not perfect, but it will bring money back to counseling, offering opportunities to keep people out of jail, but to give the prosecutors and the judges a little more latitude to deal with those issues that are now haunting us in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Zanella.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I actually attended a few presentations to try to get educated on Prop 36 over the last few months, and through that process, I, you know, a lot of these were through various law enforcement agencies across the county. I don't think it was mentioned earlier, but I did want to note that the Deputy Sheriff's Association has also endorsed Prop 36. And through that kind of education process, and I've, and to be fair, I also heard from both sides, you know, you really quickly understand, kind of come to the realization that how complex the issue is. And the goal is certainly to help people, as you'd mentioned, Mayor, and Councilmember Musgrove. And the goal is to try to, you know, get people help who need help, who are suffering from drug addiction and such, and then also get people off the streets. And at the end of the day, what we've learned since 2010 with Prop 47 is that after 47 passed, there was a surge in homelessness, and there was a surge in crime. And in my local grocery store here in San Marcos, I won't name which one, but it's one of the big chains. You know, I've lived in my house for about 20 years, and I've been going to this same grocery store probably every seven to 10 days. And so I've got, over the years, I've gotten to know the cashiers, the managers, and even though I'm only there every seven to 10 days, over the last probably 18 months, I've seen at least a half a dozen folks who've filled their baskets up with groceries and walked right out the door. And I've, and I've talked to the manager, I've seen the cashiers almost break down in tears, that this has an impact on their jobs, it has an impact on grocery prices for everybody else. And it's just, you know, they're heartbroken when they see that. And I'm not there very often, I'm there seven to 10 days. And to be, to be an eyewitness of at least five or six of these incidents is just mind-blowing. It just makes me wonder how often it really is happening. Probably quite frequently, which is really not good for those stores, not good for our community. And so 47 is clearly not working. 36 may not be perfect, but it's a new approach. It's a new way to fund some of the programs that are not being funded today, and I think because of that reason, it's worth, it's worth giving it a try. And for that, I can support this.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember, oh, sorry, Councilmember Noon, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. In listening to this discussion and some of the points that are coming up, I'm reminded of an item we had on our agenda a couple of months ago, where as a council, we passed an ordinance criminalizing banning homeless encampments, and really, I was not in support of that action, and mainly because I'm not in support of the criminalizing of unhoused individuals. So it's not lost on me how complicated this issue is. I think it's heartbreaking, the number of people that we have out on the streets, and the number of people that need help. However, I don't have the confidence that this is the right solution, and so I can't support this. I think our focus should remain, should be to address the root causes of the issues that we have. So for instance, I don't believe that we have the treatment centers, I don't believe we have the beds. And so my really focus would be to continue to make sure that we address our housing deficiencies, to make sure that we provide our residents and our youth with economic opportunities. I think we have to insist that we continue to address the mental health needs, health needs that are out there, and really, it's one of the issues that I continue to hear that it's impacting our youth, and obviously, a lot of our residents. And so I would encourage us, and along with the county and the state, to make sure that we do address the substance abuse issues, but I do not believe that we have those resources. And I am definitely not in support of really going back to the tough-on-crime. So I was also reading, and I found an article that said that the Legislative Analyst Office estimates the state would likely incarcerate 2,000 to 5,000 more people in prisons under Prop 36 by reinstituting tougher sentences for crimes like shoplifting and drug possession that are currently misdemeanors. There were nearly 91,000 people incarcerated in California prisons as of September 11th. And I certainly don't support that. I don't think we have the resources as a state to support our, really, our current prison system, and I certainly would not want to see that expanded. So I won't be supporting this resolution tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, so I'm not going to repeat everything anybody else said. I respect everybody's opinion. In this particular case, I am, I do want to support this resolution. I want to support law enforcement, and I want to support our district attorney for all the reasons that have already been stated, and I respect that some don't agree with that, but I think it's important we do that.
Thank you. And, you know, with all due respect, smash and grabs are not just a drug addict or a homeless people. They are actually criminal enterprises. I mean, all of us have seen things on the news where it's, you know, 20, 30 people running in, going into a store, robbing them, and then running out, you know, leaving their cars in the street, getting their cars and driving away. Nice cars, might I add. So, I don't think that that's all of what it is. I think it's very unsafe. I think it's very problematic. And, you know, again, this is supported by independents, Democrats, Republicans, small businesses, crime victim advocates, social justice organizations, law enforcement. It's supported by so many different entities and organizations and people. I mean, just people that are within our communities. And there was a discussion earlier about whether all of us have had situations where we have drug addicts in our family and all that. I actually, my ex-husband was a drug addict. My father was, died of alcoholism. He was an alcoholic. And so, a lot of things affect all of us every day. You may not know that about another person, but trust me, a lot of us have a lot of issues. I have a cousin that was incarcerated when he was a kid. He was a drug dealer. So, I mean, we have a lot of issues in our communities. We see the things that have helped, and we've seen that sometimes people need to be pushed to get help when they're committing crimes, or whether they are drug addicts and they need help, and they can't see that in themselves. So, I think this, as several of us have set up here, maybe it's not a perfect solution, but I do believe that it may move the needle. And I think we have learned that Prop 47 has failed our communities, feeling that, and Councilmember Sunella, I need to find out what grocery store that is, because I don't really want to go there. I know that sounds terrible, but I haven't seen any of those. It's a little scary, and it's not people putting food on their table. It's, I mean, sometimes I guess it could be, but a lot of times, it is just more than that. So, anyway, this is under New Business.
I also want to add, because I didn't think of this when I was talking.
Sure.
But not only have I personally witnessed it five or six times, but it's also not just the theft component of it, it's, there's a safety component. I remembered when you were talking, that one night, my wife was driving home from work on San Marcos Boulevard, and somebody was running from that store with groceries, not in a bag, running away from the store, and they went right into the street, and she almost hit them.
Yeah.
And they ran right out in front of her. So, there's seven that just my family has witnessed.
Yeah. I know there are a lot of things happening out there. So, I personally, I put this on the agenda because I wanted to support it as a council and get out awareness. Honestly, one of the biggest things I really wanted was to get out awareness, so our community would know that we stand with our law enforcement. We want our community to be safe. It is important to us. I think each one of us knows the struggles of our community, and we really want our community to be safe and remain safe and remain, you know, we're the lowest crime rate in the state of California, actually, in the county of San Diego, over 90,000 people. That's a big deal. But we can't continue keeping our citizens safe if we don't turn some things around and give our law enforcement all of the tools that they need and help get people off the streets. So, with that, I make a motion to support Prop 46.
36.
Sorry, 36. I do that sometimes, which is counteract Prop 47. So, anyway, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes?
No.
Okay, all right. Motion passes four to one. Moving on to item number 15. Do we have, is doing the presentation on that?
Sure. I'll make some comments here. So, I have a lot of notes here. I've been researching this for a few days. I drove by the site again today to look at the neighborhood. So, a couple of things. First, I want to say that there was a miscommunication with the original resolution, and as most of you know, there's a revision out there. So, it's on the website, it's on the agenda item. I want to clarify that I'm not opposed to battery energy storage, and I also understand our needs as a city to meet our climate action goals. I do want to disclose that I met with AES, the developer, on July 19th. Quite a few of them were there to meet with me. I'll speak to that later in my comments. But we always talk about how we stay in our lane in San Marcos. And those are important words, but I think our actions speak louder than words. And this location is within our fire protection district. So, our, all those fire people you saw here tonight, they are the first ones probably going to be called to take care of an issue if it comes up. Our sheriffs are likely to be the ones evacuating people. We know it's in a high-fire-prone area. We know there have been multiple fires in the county related to these units. Granted, this technology is probably a little newer than some of that technology. Palomar Hospital is our community hospital and a partner. City of Escondido, as was mentioned earlier, is our sister city and an ally. So, I do agree that normally, we would not get involved in neighboring issues, but I think with the recent concerns that have come up with these, and I think it's, we have to take a closer look at it. We need to watch out for our residents and our neighbors. This location, maybe as a bird flies or a drone goes, I'm guessing it's, I have no idea, a mile or two from the border of San Marcos, maybe not even, maybe not even two miles. So, if the wind comes our way, then our valley is going to be filled with whatever happens there. Not only do we have those issues, we have the need that we might have to evacuate some of our residents here in San Marcos because of the close proximity. In my opinion, it's not a reasonable location. It may, it borders our community and presents possible health and safety issues to our residents as well as our neighboring residents. As I mentioned, it's in a severe wildfire area. Another issue is there are very serious concerns in California about insurance. We're probably, many of us have experienced that, where either our policies have been canceled or our rates have gone up significantly. And there's no certainty as to how this might affect that. Let's see, I've got a few more here. I think this is the right thing to do for our residents and neighbors. And I want to touch on one thing. So, when I met with the developer, I have to say, it really offended me at one point because they asked me, what sort of support might we need within the city? And my takeaway was they were referring to financial support of some kind. And I felt like that's not how we operate in San Marcos, and that our residents should be more important than any financial support they might give to us. In the invocation, we heard that we should listen to others' points of view. In the past, this council has been supportive of each other's resolutions. I hope this is not tabled and that we get a chance to vote. It'll be disappointing if our voices get squashed, and we are not going to be allowed to have a vote on this. I think we should focus on what's best for our residents, and this resolution, in my opinion, is best for our residents and, as we have said, our neighbor, sister city. Another thing that was mentioned tonight that's pretty profound here, and we heard that our firefighters are told to show up and do the work. Well, I think we are here tonight to show up and do the work, and I think we need to speak up and be a voice for our residents and take a position on this. Let me see if I have anything else. I think that covers it. I would like to hear what the speakers have to say, if any.
Okay, is, yes, Councilmember.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I want to thank Councilmember Sunella because, and I want to clarify something. So, I first thought about this actually before I was going to meet with AES in July, kind of started asking staff some questions about it. And then, after I met with AES in July, I had some more questions. And then, happened to go into a meeting with Councilmember Sunella and told him, you know, that this was something I thought was important for Sunella, so, for San Marcos. So, he thought about it at the time and agreed, because we need two of us to put it on the agenda. So, I want to commend Councilmember Sunella for doing that. And I just also want to add, as we were driving to that meeting, the fire was happening, and we were getting a text from the city manager saying that the fire was happening at SDG&E. And so, I like walked into the meeting and just thought, this is crazy. So, that's kind of how it all developed.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor, Councilmember?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As Deputy Mayor mentioned, I did, for lack of a better way to explain it, kind of co-sponsored putting this item on the agenda. And I do agree with everything that has already been stated. My gut tells me that this Seguro plant is in the wrong location and that the safeguards are not in place today to protect our community. What came out of that meeting initially was staff, to their credit, quickly put together a resolution that was initially, you know, a bit vague and, in my opinion, far-reaching, and it kind of missed the spirit of what the Deputy Mayor and I were looking for. And to their, and also to their credit, they quickly turned around another version of it, and that came to us just earlier today. And I want to thank everybody, I don't know, Helen, if that was you, or anybody in staff that's been involved with this. I know you're super busy right now, and I want to thank your quick attention to all of it and trying to capture what we were trying to articulate with our concerns. I had, and I also wanted to, I also want to note, I have not met with the developer, nor do I really intend to. Having said all that, what we ended up getting today was, you know, a redlined version of the initial resolution, and it went from a, you know, almost a two-page resolution to almost maybe a paragraph or a paragraph and a half. And again, I can't stress enough how, you know, the kudos to staff for trying to capture it. But I go back to what I said earlier, my gut tells me this is the wrong place and at the wrong time for this facility, but I don't want our resolution to be too quickly written, and I want it to be more fact-based. And so, I know that the Deputy Mayor said that she didn't want this tabled. I don't, I'm not proposing that we table it indefinitely, but I am going to ask my colleagues if we can maybe just hit the brakes a second, get some more information. I would love, I haven't had a chance to talk to our fire department about this either, and I would love to have an opportunity to put together a stronger, fact-based resolution that I think will best articulate the concerns and best support our community. And so, if we could, if we could give it another 30 to 45 days to give staff the proper time to put a resolution together, and for us to get a little bit smarter on the issue all the way around, I think that would be appropriate. I don't know if anybody came here with that idea, but that's where my head is right now, considering I just got this, you know, eight hours ago or so.
I actually have some thoughts about that. I actually was talking to a resident out in, and I have met with the developer, and then I've also met with community members on top of that. I actually had someone bring this up that lives in the county, and I've had discussions with him in the past. He had a really good idea, and he said, "I don't know what you think about that." I'm like, "I think that's a great idea. I actually really respect your comments." One of the things that he, because for us, staying in our lane is really important to me, and that means making decisions on things that are within our community, things that are going to affect our residents. I think I'd like to spend some of that time, or have staff spend some of that time while they're doing work, because I don't know if I would support something. The way that this is written this evening, I'm not inclined to support it. However, I do think we should have our own safety standards adopted in the city. And I also think that we should be ready, because if something is proposed to be within the community, we're going to have jurisdiction over it. I don't want to be caught off-guard, caught unprepared. So, you're what you're talking about. I don't know, and Mrs. Peake can let me know if this would be appropriate. I think we should come up with some safety standards for anything that's within our community. And I would want that to be safety standards, but also, after we consult with an expert, someone that knows exactly what we're talking about, because I feel like we would need to talk to them anyway, regardless. So, some safety standards, but I really, really think that one of that parts, or one of the parts, if we were to ever allow one within the community, because I've had a lot of discussion with Dane White over the last couple of weeks since this all happened, and he even said to me, he goes, "Rebecca, they keep telling me that everything is okay, but yet, they can't provide me any information." And then, he even said, and this part really drove me crazy, was that they gave me this report that said, "Oh, during this time," which happened to be four hours after the fire actually started, "they told me that, oh, it's perfectly safe, and here are the numbers." And I said, "Well, are those blended numbers? Are those, you know, with all the time put together, or are they by certain specific areas?" Like, there are no answers on all of that. So, I kind of, I want more information from an actual expert, kind of to your point, Councilmember. But I think we should come up with our own safety standards, because if one of these is proposed within our boundaries, we're going to be responsible, and I don't want us to not be prepared at all, because we're not prepared right now. And then, also, that if we were to have these safety standards, I want it to also include monitoring that is clearly defined as to what that monitoring is, and we're not going to pay for it. It would obviously be someone, if they were, you know, if we were to approve something like this, like, I want to know what we're talking about. And I don't think any of us, any of the five of us, know anything about all of this, because it is newer technology. But to say that I don't support battery storage, I don't know that I can say that. I don't know that I can say I do, because I don't feel like I have enough information. But something that's without our, or outside of our city limits, I mean, I, we have this resolution for legally valid 2024 election. We have a ceasefire in Gaza. We have, I've been getting emails all day from someone that wants to have us take a stand of what's going on in the schools. We don't have, that's outside of our lane. Like, these things are outside of our lane. But if it is to come to us within our lane, within our city boundaries, I want to know that we're prepared. So, it's not exactly on this topic, but it is on this topic. So, I want to make sure that we're prepared, we know exactly what's going on, and our legislative platform is very clear that we do not get into things that are outside of our city that we have no control over. So, anyway.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments, and I agree with you on developing some standards. In general, I think I am supportive of the innovative nature of battery energy. In general, I think I am supportive of the innovative nature of battery energy storage systems. For me, it's more about a case-by-case location. And then, of course, a better comfort level about the safety components that are built into them. And I'm not convinced today that the safe, the proper safeguards are in place, not just with this facility, but with any of them that we have throughout the state. And we learned during that little fire that they had in Escondido just recently, you know, how quickly it can impact our community. Our air quality was diminished. My phone was blowing up and my email was being bombarded by concerned parents who wanted to know if it was safe for their kids to go to school, wanted to know if it was safe for their kids to play their soccer game. And so it did have a direct impact on our community. And so while I do agree with you that we should stay with things, you know, we should make decisions and debate things that are pertinent and within the boundaries of San Marcos. In my opinion, on this particular case, I do feel like I can, it reaches enough into our community that showing some level of either building the standards that you mentioned or passing a resolution to support our residents, I feel like it meets that qualification for that, to have that discussion.
And so anytime we're within a sphere of influence of a project and there is an environmental document, our staff actually sends a letter with comments to any outside entity, whether it be the county, City of Escondido, the City of Vista, the City of Carlsbad, because we do have a property adjacent lines with those different entities. They do send comment letters when we do have concerns about things. So if we were to have standards, I think that would be one way that we would be able to weigh in on something because we have adopted standards. Like, we could say, oh, well, in our comment letter, because I, you know, I was having this discussion actually with Dane White today. And I said, listen, I don't want you to tell me what to do within my city. I don't want you to, I don't want to tell you what to do within your city because that's outside of our bounds. And is my letter going to make a difference in what you do in your city? And he said, well, I get your point because, yeah, I mean, we have full land control within our community. So, anyway, I, point taken. Just want to make sure that if we do, and so Michelle, I do have a question. If we adopt standards within our community and staff were to comment on an EIR, would they, would they use our, what we're adopted standards are because that's how we do business? Or how would we do that? Because that could also be a policy as well, maybe. I don't know. Maybe you could clarify that for us.
I think that before going on the record with an answer to that, I need to do a little bit more research. I know that the county has paused on battery energy storage because they're doing just as you're recommending. They are taking a deep dive. They're contracting with folks that are experts in this field. And so I know when I spoke with the fire chief and the fire prevention chief today, they are eagerly awaiting the outcome of the county's analysis and are expecting that it's going to be more stringent than the state regulations. And we're under the assumption that those recommendations will be the guiding document. Whether the local level trumps the county, I need to do some more research.
Do they indicate when that might happen? Do we know?
I believe somebody threw out a December meeting date as a date that they're going to be taking some sort of action in this regard. I need to also figure out if that's entering into a contract or if they're actually going to hear any information on the study.
But the study, will the study be done by December where they're going to make it?
I don't believe so. I believe that they recently put a moratorium on issuing any additional permits. So knowing how long everything takes with RFPs and contracts and getting the process started, I would assume that they're in process.
So then maybe we get that back? Or once we find out when that's going to be? I think we should do it at the same time. I do feel like for us to be prepared, you know, because, I mean, in the interim, I mean, it's not October yet, but it's getting pretty close. I mean, should we, can we? I don't know if we can even talk about this. And I'm waiting to see if Helen says anything. But can we, in the meantime, move forward with getting our regulations aligned with what the experts are telling us? Can we hire the same expert?
What if I do some more research with the county? And with, our prevention chief actually is a leader on this topic. He recently wrote a 70-page thesis. Perhaps I can dig in a little bit more and then report back to council and get further direction from council on what might be appropriate once we've done a little bit more research.
Okay, and the gentleman that I spoke to this afternoon, he said he's going to send me the information from the expert that they've been talking to, who apparently used to build these, so he knows everything about them. In fact, I think he might have said that he built the Escondido plant that caught on fire, which, by the way, that was governed by the CPUC. That wasn't actually a local land use decision. So if it's built for a municipality, I don't think it falls under a local guideline. It falls under the state guideline, which is the CPUC. So if we were to adopt even more stringent than the CPUC, then the Escondido one that actually just caught on fire would have more lax regulations than we would have if we were to get one within our community. Correct?
I would need to, I need to dig into that, so.
All right, well, anyway, that's, okay. So what are your thoughts, Councilmember?
No, I think I'll stick with my original statement. I don't know if that needs to be into a motion or, we haven't heard from everybody. We haven't heard from the speakers, so why don't we?
And I think we have speakers?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, we do. No, I was just trying to get where you were going. Yes, Councilmember?
I look out in the audience and I know some of the people that would want to speak on this issue. And we are mandated under our climate action plan, not just for the city, but for the county and the state in general. And part of that component is battery storage. There have to be some guidelines put into place. We, as a state, we tend to rush into decisions. And then when things don't work, we just talked about Prop 47. When they don't work, then we try to Band-Aid it by throwing more legislation on it instead of taking a big, deep breath and say, okay, what are the likely collateral outcomes of this proposal? So we've seen several fires. We saw a truck fire up north where the fire department said, it's burning at 1,000 degrees. We can't put it out. Putting water on there only aggravates the problem. So the one in Escondido at their SDG&E plant, we saw water going on there, but it wasn't going on the trailer that was burning. It was going on the adjacent trailers to cool them down. And when they asked the manager for that location, you know, what about this? He said, the system worked as it's designed. It eventually put itself out without spreading. You know, San Diego Fire just hired a lithium ion expert. We have experts in the county. I think we just need to take a great big pause, look at it. And as the city manager and the mayor and actually all of my peers up here have said, let's get the best information we can. We're not going to get in the way of progress. This is a great way to store energy for those times when we need it. But we have to make sure we're doing it safely. And our primary concern is with the citizens of San Marcos. And we're not going to say no to that. But the reality of it is, our fire protection district extends beyond our boundaries. So we owe it to our first responders. The sheriff's deputies are going to go out there too to make sure that we give them the best information we possibly can. We establish local guidelines and rules on how we're going to respond, when we're going to respond, and what form it will take based on the information we have. And put that down and start the training process on it. But to make declarations now without any substantive fact, as Councilmember Sinella said, to support that when we talk about this being dangerous and this isn't safe, I ask the question, well, what are the standards for safety? What are the standards for danger? When does it become that? And without that information, we're simply, you know, throwing it against the wall and to see what sticks. So a resolution is fantastic, but I like to have some facts behind it to support it. In the meantime, we, again, I'm looking right over here at Alan because he knows exactly what I'm talking about. We have mandates we have to meet. And I think this county needs to work in a concerted effort to find the best way to do this in a safe manner. So we're not dealing with these issues. There will always be problems, we get that. But then how do we respond to them in a safe manner so we can move forward on that? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeJin, have some comments?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Really quickly, first I want to say that I absolutely think that this is within our purview that we should be looking at. So thank you Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Sinella for putting this on our agenda. I do think it's appropriate for us to look at this type of resolution, especially this type of project that sounds like definitely impacts our resident or residents or it could potentially impact. I do support the request to have more due diligence done. I have a lot of questions. It sounds like there's risks. I'm not really sure what they are or sort of how to, how to take the information and assess them, as has been said. So I do think that this is a timely discussion. I would just like to see it, obviously, with a lot more detail and a lot more information. But it is an agendized item. And so I support moving forward with listening to any speakers that are here today.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question, Mayor?
Oh, yes.
So, Madam City Attorney, is this an up or down vote with the direction to staff if it comes to that point? But there's no amendment to make because it's not, it's simply a resolution. Does that sound correct?
The matter is agendized as discussion and action as desired. So I think the city council can take the action that it desires after it holds, considers the comments made by the public. And, you know, whether it be to do an up or down vote on this or to bring it back once additional information is adduced, which I think would happen in any event. So it's really up to the city council.
Thank you.
And I did allow a lot of the discussion because it does pertain to battery energy storage and it is pertinent to the agenda item described this evening. But obviously, all you can do is take action as described in the packet, so.
Got it, okay. All right, first speaker, Alan Garachi, followed by Andrew Masparan, followed by Kendra Karia.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I just am a little confused. I printed my copy of this resolution at 10:00 AM. Do I have the current version or is something, did something come out later? The one I have is about a page and then it's a paragraph. The now therefore is on page two.
There are copies in the back, Mr. Girasi.
Okay, well, I'll check them out. But what I, all I really want to say on this is that, you know, battery energy storage is something that we really need to consider for our city. And I agree with Deputy Mayor Jenkins on this issue that, look, air, water, fire knows no boundaries. We've got to protect the citizens of our community. I wholeheartedly agree. On behalf of the Sierra Club of San Diego, on which I am an executive board member, I have discussed this with the executive board. We agree that this resolution will amplify the voice of the city, city council and the city. So when it comes to the point where it's ready for discussion and vote on a final version, I'll give more specifics as to the position. But Deputy Mayor, I just wanted you to know that the Sierra Club supports the spirit and intent of this resolution.
Thank you, next. Thank you. Next up is Andrew Masparan, followed by Kendra Karia, and then Kevin Norris.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening. First off, I want to say I agree pretty much with all of your comments and I appreciate them greatly. I do not live in the city of San Marcos. I live near the city of San Marcos. I have property that shares a property line with the proposed Seguro facility and it scares me greatly. I've lived there for 40, almost 44 years. One thing for you to take into consideration though, when you're delaying your process, is that if someone applies for a permit in the city, your moratorium or your new rules and regulations probably wouldn't apply to that particular permit request. And you've all said pretty much everything that I was going to say this evening. So thank you for that. As I said, I live near the proposed facility. These facilities are extremely dangerous. They should not be placed anywhere near a residential area. One of you mentioned the smoke and the fact that the county, the newspapers, the journals that are put out by the energy industry said, everything was wonderful. I wish I could show you a picture of the black plume of smoke that started immediately after this thing caught on fire. I would believe that if they had sent somebody into that plume of smoke, they would have had completely and totally different results from their air quality. One of you mentioned that, I believe you mentioned, that smoke knows no boundaries. The actual Seguro facility is actually closer than you mentioned. It's probably about a quarter of a mile to your mobile home parks that are on Barham and La Mari. Very, very close to this facility. And although the prevailing wind doesn't blow in that direction, we frequently throughout the year get east winds or southeast winds that would blow it directly over that area as well as over to Costco, which is not all that far away as the curl flies. It could also blow it over to the university and then on to the new Kaiser facility. So it's not going to stop at your city limit. The actual measurements, I believe, were?
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Sorry, your time's up. Kendra Karia, followed by Kevin Norris, and then it will be Jared Pashi? Pashi? Sorry if I'm saying it wrong. Welcome, Kendra.
Hello. Kendra Karia, and I'm a citizen of Escondido. The placement of a BESS facility is driven by one thing, saving millions. The goal of a BESS developer is to get as close to a substation as possible with the least number of easements needed for their gentile lines. Why put in three miles of lines when you can only put in a couple thousand feet? With no regulations, the BESS industry will push to install them anywhere they can. The fire danger and impact to residents and critical services like hospitals and schools is just collateral damage and part of doing business. Over the life of this Seguro facility, hundreds of millions of dollars will be made by AES. Yet residents of businesses will bear the burden of evacuation costs, declining home values, inability to obtain insurance or pay astronomical insurance premiums, endure toxic fumes from thermal runaway events, and excess noise and lighting impact to the community. Let's be honest, no one in this room would want to live next to this commercial-sized facility storing millions of incendiary devices. The energy industry, especially AES, presents false information to local governments and the public. They try to make us all believe they have the latest technology. To monitor the facility, maybe. But to date, the industry has no technology that can extinguish a thermal runaway event. Water can't put out the fires. Thus, the BESS industry and firefighter standard is to just let it burn. As there is no other choice, these burns can last for days. AES states, BESSs are safe and fires are rare. But we have all seen and experienced locally the exact opposite. Since 2021, there's been 41 BESS thermal runaway fires across the globe. Five of those fires, more than 10% of the total, have been right here in Southern California. Although Seguro is outside San Marcos city limits, it will still have an impact on its residents, and here's how. The Escondido BESS just had a thermal runaway event on September 4th. It has Palomar Health and Eden Valley residents in a one-half-mile evacuation zone. Seguro, which is 10 times the size of that facility, would also place the hospital and residents in a half-mile evacuation zone, thus creating two overlapping evacuation zones for those two entities. When ground zero residents, schools, businesses, and medical clinics would have to evacuate, Palomar Hospital would have to go into a shelter-in-place condition. The patients needing ER, trauma, surgery, birth, chemotherapy, and other services could not receive care critical to North County residents. We understand the carbon-neutral green energy goals of California and welcome new technology in expanding our grid. But when an energy technology has proven itself to be a dangerous element in the midst of communities and vital services, it only makes sense to keep them away from the general population. population. The BESS industry must be required to place facilities like Seguro on a site that does not risk the safety of the very residents they are storing energy for. I ask San Marcos City Council, please do not support any aspect of the BESS project. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Kevin Norris, followed by Jared Pashi, followed by Andrew Lederman.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, Councilmembers, staff. My name's Kevin Norris. You probably know, I serve on the Planet Commission Climate Action Plan Working Group, Community Advisory Committee for the Clean Energy Alliance. I've installed a few battery energy storage systems. We do research at the university. I've installed quite a few, actually. I, the one project that I installed over twelve years ago is still in operation. It's a two-and-a-half-megawatt, five-megawatt-hour lithium battery system. I worked with our fire marshal on the design and came up with a design that's safe, and we've not had any issues. SDGNE has around twenty-one systems just in San Diego, over three hundred megawatts. And California has a little over ten thousand megawatts in energy storage. There are several different types of energy storage that we need to consider. They're not just limited to lithium ion. And it's, I can get into that later. Some examples are flow batteries, thermal, and even acid batteries. It just depends on the application. When this resolution, and I just got the copy of the new one in the back when you said that it was back there, the one that I was reading wasn't the latest one. But the resolution says oppose BESS projects, and I think that's just too broad of a stroke. For instance, every house that installs solar and a battery, that's energy storage. If we say no, then everybody will have to get rid of their battery in their garage. So, it has to be a little more defined. It has to be a size, and it has to be a location. And also, I, I mean, I have a battery energy storage system in my car, and I park it in my garage. So, we have to, we just can't say no across the board. And I like the idea of talking to the city because they said no to their moratorium. They're going back, I think it was September 11th in their meeting. So, they're going back and they're getting some information, which is great. I, like I said, we do research at the university. I've talked to some researchers there, and they will help, too. They'll come. Our fire marshal will help talk to the fire marshal, as well as what we've done to make it safe. Nobody wants it dangerous. Also, Clean Energy Alliance supplies power to San Marcos residents, and we have two representatives on the board and two representatives on the advisory committee on one. So, we should be able to voice something should somebody recommend to put something here. The new designs built since 2020 have far lower risk incident failure systems, and even newer ones since 2023. So, with the newer ones, the regulations, there's regulations out there now that were not there before. UL 9540, UL 9540, sorry, you gotta give me this. Anyways, there's a lot to consider here, and I've got quotes from the fire marshal from Valley Center about air quality. There was a restaurant that burnt down that had more, that worse quality than the battery did.
Okay. Thank you. That's okay. Next up, Jared Pashi, followed by Andrew Lederman, and then Phyllis Lederman. Welcome, Jared.
Hello. Thank you, Council. So, I'm also a Ground Zero resident next to the site that we're discussing. And I would just say, as you're doing your research to get this information, understand that the majority of the information out there is biased from, and really, there's a lot of people who stand to make a lot of money with that information. So, it is a real struggle to create a, you know, a citing review board and really fact-checking and getting information that is unbiased. And then the others, you know, things to maybe consider is like, look at the disaster that happened in the battery facility up in Los Angeles, where there's, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars, and ten years later, you still can't clean up the disaster, right? So, you know, and then you look at a company like AES, who's financing the entire project with debt, right? Behind a shell company that they can easily walk away from if there was an incident. And there's no bond policy for decommission or environmental disaster. So, I think that just really looking at that doomsday scenario and figuring out how to protect the city from, because this, again, the smoke, the plumes will come into San Marcos. The contaminated runoff water from the firefighting will affect everybody. And then on top of that, the property values, nobody's going to want to live near this thing, the fire insurance problems, everyone in San Marcos, it's not going to stop at the boundary of San Marcos, right? So, I think that your voice will have a lot of weight because the county is also in the same boat. They are trying to find, and what they're doing is they're modeling New York, New Jersey, where they've come up with these energy storage system citing boards, and they're looking at national laboratories for advice and guidance, not by industry experts that are biased by this multi-billion-dollar industry, right? So, just consider who's behind the information is all that I ask. And I really appreciate you putting this resolution in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Andrew Lederman, followed by Phyllis Lederman, and then after that will be JP Theberge.
Hi. I live on Surrey Lane in Eden Valley, very close to San Marcos. Unfortunately, I also share a property line with the proposed Seguro BESS, and our livestock barn is about fifty feet away from the closest proposed battery container. AES is a very large, for-profit corporation with a less-than-stellar environmental record. They've incurred millions and millions of dollars of fines for environmental issues. And as we heard tonight from the deputy mayor, they also have a less-than-stellar ethical record. As another council member in Escondido said, he was also asked what type of support the city of Escondido would like. They're proposing, as you know, to build an enormous utility-scale BESS consisting of millions of lithium-ion batteries on a twenty-two-acre site, surrounded on all four sides by homes, including ours, and we are in a very high-risk fire area. I want to address one thing that was talked about tonight. You may be thinking, well, that's a shame, but it is outside the city limits of San Marcos, so why should we take any action? Firstly, this side, as well as all the surrounding homes, are within the San Marcos Fire District, and we rely on San Marcos for EMS, for fire, for everything related to that kind of safety. Secondly, as was already mentioned, toxic fumes do not recognize any boundaries. When there is a fire at Seguro, San Marcos residents will be in danger. I strongly support the city having a voice so that you can keep your own residents safe. These are heavy-duty industrial facilities and do not belong in areas near homes and sensitive receptors such as hospitals and schools. Because no matter what regulations are in place, you can never eliminate the danger they pose, which, incidentally, is almost word-for-word the warning AES gives potential investors in their annual report. So, thank you for your time, and I hope you take this matter up later this year and put in regulations and also oppose Seguro. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Next up, Phyllis Lederman, followed by JP Theberge and Joe Rowley.
Hi. My name is Phyllis Lederman, and I want to applaud the city of San Marcos and any other governmental agency that decides to take a second look at BESS facilities. They may be necessary and needed, but they need to be located in areas suited for such a facility as they can be incredibly dangerous. AES has proposed a Seguro BESS in Eden Valley, and like my husband said, I would share a property line with this facility. In their own 2022 annual report filed with the SEC, AES itself warns current and potential investors, quote, "In addition, our battery storage operations also involve risks associated with lithium-ion batteries. On rare occasions, lithium-ion batteries can rapidly release the energy they contain by venting smoke and flames in a manner that it can ignite nearby materials as well as other lithium-ion batteries. While more recent design developments for our storage projects seek to minimize the impact of such events, these events are inherent risks of our battery storage operations." Notice they say minimize, not eliminate. Maybe they can make them safer, but they are still not safe, and it's the nearby communities that will suffer. Seguro would be ten times the size as the BESS that recently caught fire in Escondido. Given its size, it's projected it will catch fire every two to two-and-a-half years. Even though Seguro would not be located within the city of San Marcos, these fires would directly impact the city. Palomar Hospital would have to shelter in place as it's only sixteen hundred feet from the proposed site. Then where would the citizens of San Marcos go for their emergencies, surgeries, and medical care? Other shutdowns would include Cal State San Marcos and even possibly Highway 78. It was wonderful to witness the city recognizing your firefighters tonight and to hear about their dedication. But their safety, as well as the safety of communities, should be a paramount consideration when considering BESS facilities and their location, especially as your firefighters would be the first responders when, not if, the Seguro facility catches fire. When we went to the city of Escondido and that council member talked about meeting with AES like you did, and they offered them basically money for their support, he actually said the city of Escondido is not for sale. I'm hoping the city of San Marcos feels the same way. Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. JP Theberge, followed by Joe Rowley and John Dumer, or, yeah, John Dumer.
Hello. Thank you, City Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to allow us to come here and give our point of view. This decision to approve a project like Seguro is in the county's jurisdiction. However, the cities are part of the county. They also have a say. They also have a license to give their perspective on whether or not something that happens in the county is going to impact them. It is a land use decision, inasmuch as it's also a public safety decision. Your city employees will have to grant specific authority to this project because the city of San Marcos Fire Department is an employee, the fire chief is an employee of the city council. So, you, as a city council, you should have a policy in place to help guide their decisions and help guide what they support or don't support. I do appreciate that you guys have all, I mean, every single one of you have hit on really salient points. We do need to think about how do we regulate these things? Where should they go? Is it appropriate to have projects of that size, which we've already heard? It's twelve-hundred-and-eighty megawatt-hours. It's more megawatts than any of the other facilities combined in the city of, in the county of San Diego, all those twenty or thirty that he mentioned. So, there's a lot of wattage here. The more, the risk of fire is really related to sort of, if you have a cell phone, let's say, it has a one-in-a-million chance of catching fire. But if you put a million cell phones together, well, now your chance is pretty much hundred percent. It's the same principle. You know, you have one container, which is what some of these projects, very small projects, might have one or two containers, or ten containers, like the one in Escondido. It has a certain risk of catching fire. But if you have ten times as many, like the one in Escondido, it's ten times the size, the Seguro project is ten times the size of the one in Escondido. And so, the risk of it catching fire is, it is linear. It is ten times as likely to catch fire. So, you won't wait seven years to see a fire. You'll see a fire in three or four years, or two years, or whatever the case may be. So, we appreciate this. We hope that you guys come back with something that is very specific about land use? Is this an appropriate use for neighborhoods, Santa Fe Hills, you know, Santa Leal Hills? Or is it better served to put projects of this size in an industrial area? I would also mention that Coronado Hills, which is in San Marcos, is right uphill from it. So, it, that little valley, that Eden Valley, it's called Eden Valley, where the project is, Coronado Hills is right above it. During the CoCo's fire, the fire came through Eden Valley, burnt a bunch of homes there and properties and what have you, and it burned homes up in Coronado Hills. So, that whole area is sort of part of the same. That's it. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
And full disclosure, JP is the gentleman that I spoke to today. I didn't recognize you because I haven't seen you probably in eight or ten years or something like that. And, and I'm, yeah, thank you.
If you have any other questions, let me know. We've been following this very closely.
Yeah, we're gonna, actually, if you could leave the phone number for the expert that you were telling me about with our city clerk, that would be great.
But you're about to talk to him.
I do want, oh, are you him? Okay, well, then, Joe.
Mayor, just for full disclosure, I also had a telephone call with JP myself today.
Okay. All right. Okay, Mr. Rowley.
And I did also.
Okay. Well, JP, you really got around today. If you could, if you could maybe, Mr. Rowley, before you leave, if you could leave your information with our staff, that would be great.
I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
So, Mayor Jones, Deputy Mayor Jenkins, and Councilmembers, my name is Joe Rowley. I'm an Escondido resident, but I am not affected by the Seguro project. I've had a long career as a developer of large-scale energy projects. I was formerly the Vice President of Project Development for Semper US Gas and Power. I was the developer of the Palomar Energy Project and numerous other large-scale projects, wind, solar, including batteries. And I consult on battery project site selection. With that as background, I can tell you with total confidence that this is the worst site selection I have ever seen. It's the worst example of a place to put a battery energy storage facility that I've ever seen. Such facilities are industrial in nature. They pose industrial risks to their surroundings. The, when a battery fire occurs, that's an industrial accident. And both the fire itself and the response to that fire needs to happen in an industrial setting. The Seguro site is completely surrounded right up to the fence line with residences on all sides. The Palomar Hospital is just sixteen hundred feet away, and worse yet, it's on elevated terrain. When you have a battery fire, the plume tends to go upward and could very well intersect directly with the hospital tower in this case, and it's directly downwind in the direction of normal prevailing winds. But on the other hand, if, in the case of a Santa Ana, you have elevated terrain in Coronado Hills, same problem. It's really not very far away. So, I, I'm a supporter of BESS projects. I'm a supporter of moving towards a solar-based economy. But projects like Seguro give the industry a black eye, and they create a backlash against what a lot of us are trying to achieve. I think that anything that can be done to discourage AES from proceeding with the Seguro project would be worthwhile just to, just to help mitigate that backlash. And appreciate your time and be glad to answer any questions or support the city and however you see fit. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe. If you could just leave your information with our staff, that would be great. John Dumer, followed by David Eklund.
Hello. I wrote down a few things. I really wanted to stay in my, in our lane. So, I picked a topic that I think is in your lane. It's actually in the lane of anybody who lives in North County. So, good evening, Councilmembers. I'd like to express my deep concern about the proposed Seguro battery storage plant and its current planned location near Palomar Medical Center. I fully support the transition to renewable energy. I believe placing this facility so close to a major hospital is a serious and unacceptable risk. Palomar Medical Center is a trauma hospital, serving as a critical lifeline for our community. A fire at the battery plant, which is a known risk with lithium-ion technology, could release hazardous fumes that would not only compromise air quality, but also potentially force the hospital to shut down or evacuate patients. This would endanger lives and disrupt essential healthcare services when they are needed most. It's simply too dangerous to place the plant just sixteen hundred feet from such a vital facility. Our hospitals must remain safe havens for those in need, not to be threatened by the risk posed by an industrial facility next door. While I understand the need for energy storage, there are safer locations for this project, ones that do not jeopardize the health and safety of our community, I urge the City Council to oppose the current proposed location of the Seguro plant and explore alternative sites that would better protect the well-being of residents and ensure Palomar Hospital can continue to operate without risk of disruption. continue to operate without risk of disruption. Let's prioritize public safety while we move forward with clean energy initiatives. Thank you very much. And by the way, I'm very, your, I thought your comments earlier between yourselves was very thoughtful, and I, it was, it was refreshing. Also, go San Marcos. The best 10 years of my life I spent at Palomar College.
Thank you. David Eklund is next up.
Good evening, council members, mayor, deputy mayor. And I appreciate hearing what you said, Deputy Mayor, about them offering you money and being open with that. When I went to my first meeting, hearing AES, I asked them a question. Can you guarantee that there will not be a fire? Why do I ask them that question? I'm a father. I'm a grandfather of nine. I'm going to have four of my grandchildren living right adjacent to that property that will be Seguro project. I want my grandchildren to be protected. But I also want my neighbors that I live by to have a good life and to be protected also. I think that's what we do. And it's not very neighborly when you come and you actually offer money to incentivize the project to make sure that it gets passed through. So I speak to you as a father, as a husband, as a grandfather, and as a neighbor, that I don't want to see something that could put my family in jeopardy, and you would not want to do that yourself. And so I just encourage all of you to think that through. If the potential is there to have something happen, what do I do? What do I do with my grandkids? What do I do, what do I do trying to get out of a single ingress, egress? I am right behind that property. If it's burning, I don't want to take my kids through the smoke. I don't want to do that. And so I'm just asking you to use common sense. This is not the place to put that. There is plenty of area in Southern California to establish these battery energy storage systems that are completely away from any population with no hazard to the people. The only upside is for AES. It is not an upside for San Marcos or Escondido, and especially not for Eden Valley. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
May I make a comment?
Sure, go right ahead.
So I appreciate all the comments. It is clearly within our lane, with the Fire District being the first response. I think if we do not take action tonight, and let me read what it says. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of San Marcos does hereby oppose the Seguro battery energy storage system project as currently proposed and located, adjacent to the city of San Marcos, until further study and guidelines, which everybody's talked about is important, for safety standards and locations can be developed region-wide. So all we are doing tonight is saying that we oppose the current location, which many people, and we even have one, at least one expert there, that has made that comment. So while, while I appreciate that there's an effort to table this, I think what I would like to do is make the motion to approve the resolution, now that all the speakers have spoken, and we take a vote, and then we come forward later with all the great suggestions that everybody has. But at least we've gone on record that we are representing our residents to the best of our ability. And I may be the only one, but I think it's right to do the right thing.
So one comment that I do want to make, so that everyone is clear, we, the city council does not direct our Fire Department or our Fire District to make a decision to support a project or not support a project. We have no authority over them. We do not control our Fire Chief, and we don't have anything to do with that. So what we, what this, what this resolution means to me is that we, that we're taking a stand on something and putting it on a piece of paper to say, we oppose this, but we're not making the decision, but we're going to do it anyway. The problem with that is, there are a lot of things, and I mentioned it a little bit earlier. We have the resolution for a legally valid 2024 general election. We have what I spoke about a little bit earlier, someone asking to put on the agenda a resolution against boys being allowed to, a resolution against a state law about boys being allowed in girls' bathrooms here in the school district, which I philosophically 100% am opposed to. I'm opposed to actually citing a plant that I don't have any information about, a battery storage plant that I have no information about. But these things are not within our control personally. I have an issue with that very much. Now, if a, if a battery plant were to come into the city and we don't have any regulations, I have a real problem with that because I have control over that. We have a vote. We will have a vote. There will be a meaningful vote of a yes or a no to whether cite, to cite that project. I have personally an issue. I always say, stay in our lane. I actually stay in our lane. I don't say that I do and don't. And I've voted for five, five elections, 18 years, on the same legislative platform pretty much, that we stay in our lane. It's been something that we've been doing since the 80s, which is why I have an issue with not staying in our lane. Though, I am very concerned about having a battery plant, storage plant, that we don't have any information about. But I feel also very passionate about staying in our lane, and I have to, I have to stick with that. So I don't know what's going to end up happening. There was some discuss, oh, I'm sorry. Council member, did you have something to say?
The deputy mayor made a motion. Are you offering a substitute motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm gonna, I'd like to second, I'd like to second the deputy mayor's motion. After listening to the public comment, I am able to support the revised resolution that is part of the agenda. I don't see any reason why we're not able to revisit this, especially since we have given direction to city staff that we're going to be continuing to deal with these issues. And so I don't see any reason why we can't bring an item back. Respectfully, Mayor, the items that you've listed are not on this agenda. This item is. So I ask for a vote on it.
I'll make a substitute motion, Mayor. That we send the resolution back to staff with the recommendations we made about researching safety protocols, response, how it affects our first responders, the mechanisms in place on-site for any one of the particular battery plants. We could go infinitum on this, but this really needs a lot more research so that we have all the best information we can possibly get to make an informed decision before we pass resolutions every day, and then consider two weeks later, we're going to change it because of a set of circumstances. That's my motion.
I have a clarifying question on that. Would you make an amendment to that substitute motion to add that we also consecutively work on safety regulations within our, within our city if something were to come in front of us?
The friendly amendment is accepted.
Okay, I second that then. Okay. We have a motion and a second on the, oh, sorry.
Can we have some discussion on that?
Sure.
First, I want to just thank everybody who came out tonight, and I also want to thank my colleagues for this thoughtful discussion on this important matter that, as one of the speakers mentioned. I've never been so impressed with our team up here. You know, we typically are fairly lockstep in our decisions, and they're usually, you know, 95% we're unanimous. And this is one of those situations where there's, you know, I think, I think our differences mainly surround the fact that this particular project is not within the boundaries of the city of San Marcos. And so I can certainly respect those opinions on that. My opinion's a little bit different. As I, as I mentioned earlier, I do think that this does meet a standard in which that it has, it has the potential of having such an impact on our community, that it is something that we should learn more about, develop some standards, as the mayor had mentioned, and ultimately take a position on. And, you know, I see Escondido, I would not, I agree with you, Mayor. I would not want Escondido to come in and pass a resolution on something in our city. However, if we had already passed the resolution on that, and they came in after us and passed the resolution to support our efforts, I think I would view that pretty positively. And that would be the case in this situation. Having said all of that, I'm going to support this, this motion made by council member Musgrove. And if I, if I heard you correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying, bring this back at a later date, not, you're not postponing it indefinitely, and that, and that we want to give staff an opportunity to build a resolution that's more fact-based and has a little bit more meat on the bones than, you know, the deputy mayor did read the, kind of the gist of the resolution, and it was really, it really is kind of down to a couple sentences. And so I think there's an opportunity here to support our residents on this important matter. But I want a resolution that is, is fact-based and also has, you know, a little bit more hardiness to it than just, you know, one or two sentences. Is that what you, is that the spirit of your, of your motion? So I make sure I understand it clearly?
It is, and there is no time certain on it, to answer that first question.
Okay.
And the friendly amendment was that we work on, okay.
I got that. So I, I will support that motion under, under everything I just said. And the other thing I wanted, I just, I got to stress this again, because our, our poor staff's been working so hard on so many really important issues right now. And I think when deputy mayor and I started talking about this, it was September 5th, and it's, you know, it's September 24th tonight. And, you know, I've been around government long enough to know that not a lot of things get done in 19 days, and that doesn't even if you back out the weekends. And so it was an incredible effort by our staff, and like I said, I'm not sure exactly who worked on this, legal, others. But for everybody that was involved, I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, because it's something that the deputy mayor brought, brought up, thank you for your efforts on this. And I know that, you know, your intentions were to try to fulfill what we were trying to accomplish, and I really appreciate that. And I think that together, as, as I heard my colleagues tonight, I think there's a lot more that we're united on, on this than there is that we're against. And I think there's an opportunity to really do this in a little bit more measured approach that if we just take our time, we can really do something special for our community and show the support that they deserve.
I have a question about the timeframe. The motion included what sort of timeframe? When would this come back to?
It's not time certain. The research has to be completed, and we don't want to hamstring that with a definite date when, if they're not completed. It could come sooner or later, but I want a full accounting, as much as we can get with the current state of information.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
And I, I will just comment that I think the, I agree with what needs to be done at some point, but the really simple question is, do you oppose the Seguro project as it sits right now? And so I'm not going to agree with the substitute motion. I think, I think that we can best represent our residents and our neighbors by opposing this. It's really simple, and I think there's other issues going on. And so I'm, I'm not going to agree with the substitute motion.
Okay.
Call the question, Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? I'm sorry. What?
I'm sorry. I just, indicating that calling the question is, it's moving the previous question as opposed to calling the question, so, yes.
For the substitute motion?
We have a motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
No.
Okay. Motion passes three to two. Okay, moving on to oral communications. Do we have any speakers? Okay. Azareli Asparo, followed by Noah Stangby, followed by Jeffrey Pappendique. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Thank you for your time. My name is Azareli Asparo, and I am a mother seeking for some help and support. We are having an issue at the middle schools and high schools with male students using the restroom as well as locker rooms. Our girls are being made to change in front of male students, and it is making them very uncomfortable. Many of them have stated that they're starting to have anxiety attacks, and we are trying to diffuse this so that it doesn't turn into a rape case, because it can. I don't understand how this is not important to you or something you can help assist with, since it is San Marcos residency children who are the future of our community. When we have brought this issue up with the school district and principals, we are told that code section 221.5 specifically prohibiting discrimination, the basis of sex with regard to enrollment in classes or courses, careers, counseling, and ability of physical education activity or sports to both sexes, which is stating that they don't have to share a restroom, they don't have to share a locker room with the opposite sex. A solution is having a designated bathroom for the students who choose to identify as the opposite sex, giving them privacy as well as respecting other students' boundaries. We hope you bring this situation to light to help find a way to better assist the schools' principals to be able to make locker rooms and restrooms a safe place for our children. Bottom line, we need you to stand up with us and support us as parents, as this community. We want this to be a topic for the next agenda, and we want to vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Noah Stangby, followed by Jeffrey Pappendique. Pappendec, my apologies.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, I was the person sending the emails about boys using girls' rooms and locker rooms. As I stated in our previous meeting that I spoke at, my wife and I are youth leaders at Grace Church here in San Marcos. We have 35 kids, most of which are in San Marcos Unified Schools. As Azareli noted, two girls personally came to us talking about the very situation that she was commenting on. These girls are scared. These girls are confused. And I think it's a microcosm of a larger problem that's occurring, not just in the city, but around this nation and the world. There are states, including California, where books that have pornographic images are being in school libraries, where boys are using girls' rooms, girls are using boys' rooms, kids are coming to school believing that they're a dog or a cat. There are issues here that we need to speak on. Specifically, the vice principal at Woodland Park Middle School cited AB 1266, which was also passed by Governor Jerry Brown, that they are standing behind to protect their decision to allow people of the opposite sex to truly molest and bother these young women in their locker rooms and in their bathrooms. So I understand and respect the policy that you have of staying in your lane, but we are asking you to make this a part of your lane because the schools are citing law. You are here to uphold and to enforce and to pass new law, including ordinances. We're asking that you guys would adopt an initiative to pass an ordinance so that we can fight this AB 1266 that schools are using to basically not make a decision and not stand against something that is an injustice and something that is wrong and something that's poisoning the minds and the hearts of our future. So I would like to ask you tonight, I believe we need two votes to put this on the agenda so that we can further the discussion. Can we put this to a vote?
No, they cannot.
Why is that?
It's because they can't vote on something that comes up on oral communications. So if A, if two council members or the mayor request that it comes on a future agenda, that's how it happens.
Okay.
You can't have them vote on it now, sir.
Okay. So then can we, can I ask for two council members and/or the mayor to support this being a future agenda item? this being a future agenda item? You'll get more emails from me.
It's Jeffrey Poppin Deck, followed by Flower Alvarez Lopez. Did I say it right that time?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, and then Marlene Walder will be next.
So I spoke two weeks ago. I am from Lakeview Mobile Estates. Back, just a quick review, back in July, we got a proposed change to our rules and regulations, and part one of those was a possibility that they might flip our park from, to all ages. It's right now a fifty-five plus. You know, I thought it was funny the way, and I wanna thank Helen and Jaclyn for looking at all those papers. They were in bad shape. But, you know, the way it was worded, the owner wants to retain, he's gonna retain the current age restriction, but he reserves the right to modify the age restrictions in the future. And that's kind of like, well, I wanna marry you, but I want you to sign this prenuptial. I don't plan on divorcing you, you know, it's kinda like that. So it's kinda, it's got us worried, especially since he is ninety-two, and by the time this happens, he'll be ninety-three, so the future is gonna come pretty quick. So I'm here with John Mosher from San Marcos Mobile Home...
Resident?
Yeah. Anyway, we're trying to get the senior mobile home overlay district on the agenda, and I know you're working on that already, but according to his attorney, that would be the most effective way to prevent our park and other parks from being converted into all-ages parks, which seems to be the trend that's going on right now. So I would like to ask you to, and I know you're working on it, and I, and I wanna thank you all for, for doing that, and I just, I'm just here to keep it in your, forefront of your minds because this could happen quicker. I have just found out, I thought the six-month clock was going to start when we got the revised, revised rules and regulations, but I just found out from a couple of our members that those rules and regulations are also, are currently being handed out. And they're not really being served like they're supposed to. They're being stuck under people's door mats or clipped onto their mailbox post, and nobody is actually signing and dating their receiving them like when you get a proper serving. So I didn't receive one, and another board member that was here already left, has not received one either. So we don't really know when this six months is going to start, but I'll be in contact with them.
Thank you, Jeffrey, and yes, we are working on that. Okay, Flower Alvarez Lopez, followed by Marlene Walder. Welcome, Flower.
Thank you for having me back. Again, just for the record purpose, my name is Flower Alvarez Lopez. I am part of Universidad Popular. Like I've shared before, Universidad Popular is a community-based organization embedded in North County San Diego. Our human rights framework has allowed us to empower and uplift historically marginalized communities and community members. We have areas of priority in education, access to education, including popular education. We teach citizenship classes throughout North County, throughout the week, so we have very large groups of folks that come learn civic engagement, government, and go on to become citizens. We have economic justice efforts where we get feedback from community members and report that back to the state on what economic justice looks like for our community. We do a lot of projects around justice, language justice. I know I've shared about our work in disaster preparedness, and we also have a community pantry that, since we believe in access to healthy food. And the reason that I, I'm mentioning this is because sometimes when we're up here giving public comment and registering our, our positions, I, I kinda feels like some, some of y'all forget that we're the experts in the, in the community, and especially in, in the community in San Marcos, that most of us have been in the traditionally Mexican communities here for generations in North County. And I feel like a lot of the council needs just history and information on what has happened here in North County. So we're more than happy to, to help with that, that lack of, or that gap in knowledge in terms of what has disproportionately marginalized and impacted our communities here, and especially in San Marcos. Wanted just to also put on the record that we're looking forward to some of the development block grant community workshops that are coming up. So we'll be participating in some of that that's happening in the near future, October next month. So I will be seeing y'all in that space. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor, I just, I know we can't engage, but Flower, I just wanted to let you know I'm gonna give our city clerk my business card that has my personal cellphone on it. I would love to meet with you.
Okay, moving on to...
Marlene.
Oh, I'm Marlene. What? Oh, I was, I was moving things around so much, I actually, yeah, I've got a lot going on up here. Ask Phil, he's like, wow, there's stuff everywhere. Yes, it's messy up here. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members, I'm here on another matter, but it's traffic, and we're waiting for a major accident. I have to say, I ran through the red light myself one day.
What?
Yeah. And it's where Lamore and Barham is, well, it was a yellow light, but it's still...
Oh, you said it was red.
It turned red before I got through it. And, well, in my book, you stop at a yellow. That's the problem on Barham right now in Lamore, is when you're coming down Lamore, and we had it happen to me this morning, we're, our light was green and the guy ran through. And if we go out our back gate on Lamore, they're coming down so fast, they're going over forty, but they're taking the shortcut from the college to go all the way around in a horseshoe, and it's getting worse. When the new, the traffic is, is tripled. I didn't used to hear it, and now I hear it in my house, and I have the better windows and everything. I shouldn't be hearing it. I also shouldn't be feeling the vibration from the trucks going down the road. But that's not the major problem. They're coming down Lamore at lickety-split speed, and the people who are crossing right now are rushing in the early morning and the evening. And we have said, or the council has given, the newer houses that are coming by Grace Church, only to stop them from turning left at night. The problem's gonna be turning left in the morning as well as night. I'm waiting there fifteen minutes if I wanna go down Twin Oaks, I mean, to get to Twin Oaks. Also, we don't have a left turn, when we come out of the park to turn left at our entrance, there's no safety lane, and the cars are not stopping to let you out, and they're blocking... The other day, I tried to get out and the, I'm sorry, to get in, and the traffic wasn't that heavy, but the line stops right across our driveway, and the people, they leave, we all leave a lot of space between cars, but not a space, enough space that one could turn in. And this was not at the heart of the day, but...
Thank you, Marlene. Okay, next up is our reports. Sandec, last meeting, we had an update from the auditor, not too much more than that, and they have a corrective plan that they are going to be doing. And then we have another meeting on Friday. Not too much from that. Next is the League of California Cities.
We meet next month.
Okay, North County Transit.
They canceled our meeting this month because there were only consent items.
Okay, North County...
Go figure.
Yeah, North County Dispatch.
We won't meet for another two more months.
Okay, Clean Energy Alliance.
We meet this Friday.
Okay, City Council Business Visit.
I think that's us, Mayor.
I know, I was, I was gonna see if you wanted to start. Okay, I'll, I'll start if you...
Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, Moonlight Glassing, we, council member Nunez and I went to that yesterday. Yep, they have a lot of cool stuff going on. They were established in nineteen seventy-nine. It's a collective of board-building craftsmen focused on the highest-quality surfboard manufacturing practices, renowned name in surf culture, contributing to various aspects of surf history. Bob Hurley, founder of Billabong and Hurley, once worked at Moonlight. Moonlight attracts shapers from all over the world and ships boards globally. They had one there that was a Tamiaka, I think it was a Tamiaka. Anyway, they're committed to creating surfboards that stand the test of time. So a lot of times, they also have surf shapers or surfboard shapers that ship them, the boards, and then they laminate them and everything, and then they ship them back. So they do all of the glassing, all the protective coating on them, and that is what they, they do. They do a lot of different things. It's super cool. It's right there in La Costa Meadows, and they have sixteen employees.
So I probably should not admit this, but I had no idea how historic and what an icon this shop is. I'm not a surfer, but it's one of those places where I had no idea. It's in San Marcos, and it's a worldwide renowned place, and it was so impressive to see, it really, they're creating works of art. And it's not a culture that, that I know. So we did have our city clerk, Phil, join us on the visit, and I almost feel like I wanna put him on the spot.
Yeah, did I say that, nay, right? Tamiaka? Tamiaka?
Takayama.
Takayama. I was close. I was trying to find my note, but I couldn't find it quick enough. Yeah, Takayama. And so since Phil is an aficionado, I thought, what did you think? What, what, was it your first time there?
Touring, yes. I'd been in the showroom before, but yeah, it's, I would say any major surf manufacturer, especially on the West Coast, can probably trace their glassing lineage back to Moonlight Glassing.
Yeah. I, I think you were a little bit in a fanning sort of thing. He was really looking around and just the history and everything. And they actually had it cleaned up because last time there was the coating all over the ground, and it was just like, super cool colors and everything, and they actually had a piece of art in the entryway. I don't think we have a picture of it, but...
Oh, we do.
It's right behind us, but that cool thing behind us was hand-painted. It's hard to even believe. Look, look how amazing that thing is. It was incredible. Anyway, it was hand-painted, but it's on that table behind us that you can't see, and it was this piece, it, so it, like, when they put the glassing on, it drips down, and it, and it hardens, and it made this beautiful piece of glass. And they said sometimes people just come in and wanna take that and polish it up and make like earrings out of it and other jewelry and pieces of art. It's, it's really, it's really fantastic. But that's, that's Brian, the owner, so really fun visit, really fun visit. Now, I don't surf myself either, but my ex and my son and my daughter actually surf a little bit. My son surfs quite a bit, but yeah, they all have surfboards that have been glassed there.
No, and, and you can tell right away that it's definitely a really small community, and it's just individuals that are obviously into surfing and are at the top of their field and their craft, and it really, what they're producing is just incredible.
And that Takayama, did I say that right? Takayama was a ten-foot, it was beautiful, that board was beautiful, it was ten feet, and really pale blue, it was, it was really pretty, but they had a lot of really beautiful boards there waiting, and it's, and it's an art, definitely an art, so it was a lot of fun. Oh, it's in La Costa Meadows, so over there, and they're really sensitive to making sure that they don't, you know, have bad fumes in the environment and everything, and it's because they're right next to, well, they're not right next to it, but they're really close to the preschool there. So they're very, they've been working on having less environmental things, so they redid their entire system, and they're really very econom, or eco-friendly with all the stuff they're doing over there. Anyway...
It's interesting, it's in La Costa Meadows.
Mm-hmm. It's a family they've created.
Yeah, well, that, well, that little commercial park or light industrial park has some really unique businesses.
It does, it really does.
It's interesting.
And Hunter Industries is there, which is our largest private employer in the whole city. They're, they're there as well. So that was, it was a fun visit, and definitely if you, I mean, their showroom's not open all the time, but you can definitely go there, but you can contact them and go visit the showroom. Or if you're a shaper, you could probably see if you could get in on getting your glassing done there. Anyway, that's it, and then, oh, anything else? Commentary?
Yeah, just, today's the day of San Marcos Fire, but about five forty-five this afternoon, my, my wife, who's an administrator at Nob Hill Elementary School, she sent me a text, and obviously I just didn't get a chance to say something earlier because we got into the meeting, but she said grateful for the fire department today and their quick response. We had a fire that was very close to the school, and they quickly took care of it. So, Dan, if you could please pass that on to the, the team. Always good to hear some positive feedback, so thank you.
Yep, they did a great job. Okay, with that, this meeting's adjourned.